Frankly, that is strategic planning. This is the implementation of. And without budget, nothing else really matters. And so this is an extension of strategic planning in the most practical sense. Before we get started, though, we have a couple audibles from our city manager, Sean Scherels.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, commissioners and staff, and for the public who is watching. I'd like to take a moment this morning to really kick things off on a good and positive note. We have a lot ahead of us today. There's an awful lot to discuss, and I will talk about the agenda in a few moments. But before we really begin, there's a couple of presentations that I would like to make and a few recognitions, again, to start things off on a really positive note. Many of our airport staff was at an annual conference this past weekend. And at that conference, there were some awards that a staff member received and then the entire team at the airport received. And so the first one that I would like to announce is one award that was given to Ryan Mosher, who is one of our airport operations specialists. He received an honorary award for excellence in airport operations from the Florida Airport Council Operations Committee at their conference last weekend. That's a statewide recognition. So we'd like to congratulate and recognize Ryan. Ryan, if you would come forward.
Ryan, awesome.
Thank you, sir.
There you go, sir. We're gonna take it quickly. Only we're moving right here.
Yes.
Comments, sir?
I'm just very appreciative and thank you to everyone at the Florida Airport Council and my managers at Lakeland. I couldn't have done it without them, so I'm just very appreciative.
Great. Keep up the great work, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, Ryan. Thank you. And then next, I would like to announce that Lakeland-Lender International Airport at the conference was, has received the 2023 Florida Department of Transportation General Aviation Airport of the Year Award. In the state of Florida, there are 109 general aviation airports. And so Lakeland-Lender International Airport and our staff received the airport, general aviation airport of the year award. And so Chris and Adam, we appreciate you coming forward for presentation and congratulations.
Awesome. All right, some summary comments.
So thanks for the recognition. This is a big award for us, the audit airport, to be selected as the, you know, general aviation airport of the year in the state. One thing I want to add is not only does it take a great team at the airport, which we have, and I'm very proud of, I get the honor of leading that team. I'm the lucky one that just happens to be surrounded by great people. But also with this award, the big thing, every department that's sitting back here in the crowd should take pride in the fact that we got this award because we can't do it without you. Every department helps this airport. Every department makes our airport great, and I just appreciate everybody's efforts. And we can't do it without the commission. Thank you for your support. And then the CMO's office is always there for us. They pick up the phone. We have conversations. That's how we get things done, and we just appreciate everybody's efforts. So thank you to everybody here in this room.
Thank you, sir. Continue on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, big news and congratulations to the team out at the airport and for everyone who assists in supporting the operations out there. Lakeland's the best of the best, and there's proof of that right there. So with that, we will kind of move into the budget workshop. And it's gonna be, you know, a little different than what the commission and staff has been used to in past years because, if you'll recall, we've had Dr. Craig Collins, who has helped us in facilitated strategic planning sessions and budget workshops. And so this year, it's gonna be staff. And so it'll be staff that's kind of leading us through the discussions. And just to kind of give you just an overview of the way, the agenda for today and the way that we will proceed throughout the day. We're gonna first start with a water utilities update by our interim director, David Bayhand. This is something that we customarily do every year. As the commission is aware, you know, the commission preapproves rate increases in three-year increments. We are now, this will be the third year of the last preapproval, but the commission has the ability in each of those years to adjust that if needed. And so David Bayhand will talk to you about that. Then next year, we will be coming back to the commission and having presentations and workshops to talk about the next set of three-year increments for preapproval. So we'll start off that way today. We're then gonna have an update and learn about where we are positioned in terms of revenue in our enterprise and special revenue funds, and Mike Brossart's gonna lead us through that. And then we're gonna get into the budget assumptions. And so when we talk about budget assumptions, as you're aware from past years, what you're going to see at the end of the day when we look at the day's cash file as a method of measurement, there will be some things that are already included in there and so that we can kind of determine where our financial position is projected to be. But certainly, those are up for discussion. And so we'll have those discussions with the commission, and we'll be looking for some direction where we can receive that today. Included in the budget assumptions will be operating expenses. We'll talk about personnel needs in terms of headcount and changes to our headcount. We'll talk about our health insurance position and what we're projecting for cost related to that. And this year, there's also some exciting changes that Joyce Diaz is going to present to everyone. Then we're gonna have a presentation related to our wages and benefits. And as you're all aware, we have a consultant, and we have been working closely with the consultant for quite some time now to present and perform our wage and benefits study. And there are some recommendations that go along with that. After that, we will have an operating budget overview that, again, Mike Brossart will be presenting, and it will be during that time that certainly we will be looking for city commission input, and that will then lead us into time for city commission discussions. Now, certainly throughout each of the presentations, and especially when each presentation ends, we'll see if the commission has questions, and we'll try to provide that information. But then we will get to closer to the end of the day where it will be the commission's time to talk about priorities, to talk about any concerns or give direction where you choose to related to our budgeting moving forward. And then we will, at the end of the day, as we always do, we will need to close with a discussion about the authorization for the maximum millage because we have to go through the process of publishing that and moving toward approval. We have not preprogrammed in breaks into the day. It's really just gonna be kind of as it flows, as we get, you know, timing depending on how much we talk during each one of the sessions, we will just find logical places to stop and take a break. We do have lunch provided, and so we will have lunch here probably somewhere between 11:30 and 12 o'clock. And again, we'll just kind of see how that goes as we flow through our discussions today. Now, I just want to, you know, also kind of highlight the fact that, you know, this is our budget workshop. There are going to be opportunities for staff to seek direction from the commission today. However, as always, you know, we have time, if needed, to have additional workshops if that's where we find ourselves with the commission. We've got the entire month of August and even September if we need to have additional workshops. If we're able to have decisions made today and direction given today, you know, that's possible then that we can go back, finalize the budget, and then move to the budget hearings, which are scheduled in September, and we will give those dates at the end of the day. So with that, that's just an overview of how we will proceed throughout the day, and unless there's any questions on that, we will begin our first presentation. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. So as I mentioned, we have our interim director of our water utility, David Bayhand, is here, and David is gonna talk to us and present our water utilities revenue sufficiency update.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, and Commissioners. So this presentation may look somewhat familiar as not much has changed since last year. Bill Anderson presented a very similar presentation to you this time last year. So as you recall, as Sean mentioned, we presented a three-year rate plan back in '22. And so we are in year two of that rate plan right now with, of course, next year or this coming fiscal year '24 being the last year of the rate plan. Spoiler alert, we are in pretty good shape, and there are no recommended changes to the adopted FY '24 plan. But to give you a little bit of a history of where we, how we got to the rate plan design, it was designed to increase our revenues for water and wastewater by 2% each year. And to do that, they applied a 2% increase for all wastewater charges and fire protection fees and industrial surcharges. It also increased our water meter base charges by 2%. But when it comes to the usage charge, it was a little bit different. As you may be aware, we have a conservation tiered structure, and so the more water you use, the more you pay. And so our first tier is what we call our lifeline rate is from 0 to 7,000 gallons. Over the three-year rate plan, we kept that rate flat. We did not change that. It's basically the bare minimum that people would use with little to no irrigation. So we did not want to increase that rate over the three years. Tiers two, three, and four, however, did increase slightly more than 2% each year to compensate that and to signal the use for less discretionary water. So this next slide shows a typical bill for a customer that has both water and wastewater services from the city, using 8,000 gallons per month, single-family residential, of course. And this typical bill, using today's current rate, that first yellow and black bar is, that bill would look like $86.53 today. And with the proposed FY '24 rate, that would increase by $1.46 up to $87.99. Now, compared to 29 other utilities throughout the state, as you can see on this graph, we're well below the average, about 23% below the survey average. One thing to note here is the survey average of 108.36 actually increased by about 450 from last year's survey average, meaning that while the survey increased over the same time period about 450, we're only going up about $1.46. So we're pretty competitive with our rates, even though we are increasing slightly this year. And then just in conclusion, we're on plan. And so that three-year rate plan that we adopted in '22, if the commission so pleases, would be effective, the '24 rate that is, will be effective October 1. I don't believe that that has any action required on your part because it is already adopted. However, next year, as Sean mentioned, will be a little bit more robust presentation and will include a multi-year plan for your consideration at that time. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yes, sir. One of the questions and things that we might want to mention are the impact of PRWC and the anticipation of that timing.
Certainly. So as they do every year, our rate consultant reviews where we're at today with the adopted plan. And this year, we did have a pretty lengthy conversation with our consultant regarding the PRWC and the upcoming rates. We will bring that to you maybe in a separate workshop between now and next budget presentation next year because there are multiple options to do that, to phase that in, to, it could be a base charge, it could be a surcharge, it could be a usage charge. There's many options that our rate consultant has provided, but nonetheless, it's gonna be, you know, something that we're gonna have to plan for. So I think that's gonna, my opinion, it should be a separate workshop to talk about that.
I would think that's very wise for us to do because of the intricacies of it.
And we have already been meeting with the consultants and having those discussions, but because we already had the preapproval, you know, for this next budget year's rates, knowing that, then it will be the following that will be affected by that, we will definitely have workshops and have the consultants here to assist us with that throughout this next year.
I just wanted us to anticipate the cycle of that as we're going forward. Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine is just also on the PRWC, a clarifying point. So when you say in your first point that the adopted water and wastewater monthly service rates are adequate to meet the projected operating capital and debt service, so that capital there has nothing to do, like PRWC is absolutely separate, those alternate wells, or is some of that in there? I'm just curious, is this only for expanding to our residential and our commercial users, you know, even with the state of growth? You know, so kind of, I guess it's two kind of part. One is this capital point, is that enough to anticipate? You've looked at the growth rate, like, that we did not expect, you know, how many people are moving here? So that capital includes the growth rate that we're, the explosive growth rate that we're experiencing? And then secondly, this capital is separate altogether from the PRWC? Are those like two separate capital buckets?
Right. Great questions. So to your first point, the FY '24 adopted rate is sufficient to cover our capital that we've already planned for, that is in the CIP now. So it was already adopted. There are, in future years, there's going to be a different capital plan, of course, and so that next year's rate plan will look much different than today. To the second point, there are currently PRWC costs, but they're not necessarily capital costs in the way of infrastructure and things that are being built. We do have fees that we pay for the PRWC administration, there's design going on and things like that. And so we are covering that in our current budget.
Okay. So that we're covering all of the design, and the construction will be the big cost that we have to determine after we see what grants we get and all of that. Back to the current CIP. So in my mind, you know, I don't think we imagine 7,600 people would move here in a year or whatever it was, you know, or to have explosive growth and, you know, our million square foot warehouses and just even the downtown development. So not to be blindsided next year, you know, it sounds so great, like great news that this is covering all of these current CIPs. Do you anticipate that there's a big elephant in the room that we don't know about, meaning like next year at this time, because of the influx of 7,600 people or whatever that number is and all of the development, that we're like, we need a whole new line, you know, because of the explosion over by Bonnet Springs Park or in southwest Lakeland? Just kind of wanting to have that future anticipation, you know, kind of answered and clarified.
Sure. The growth is significant for our utility, absolutely, and it is putting a lot of pressure on us to grow the utility and to change out infrastructure, to make it bigger, on top of it already being old, you know, in some places. I will say that as we have looked at the next five years, it is gonna look much different. It has to because of the growth. And so, you know, I don't know that a 2% is gonna be enough next year. We just have to get into that a little bit deeper than we had this year. So I think to answer your question, I don't want to call it an elephant in the room, however, I think the rate plan for the next three years will look very, very different than what it does right now.
And I guess that's my question. Rather than waiting for next year, if there are things that you know, rather than feeling good about this 2%, if there is a way that 3% helps us posture ourself more appropriately for this growth by next year, that's kind of what I'm just making sure of.
No, I hear your question. And I think from a PRWC side, which I am able to serve on, our response to this really has been those integrations ought to happen as they really are occurring and as they're pointable in terms of the capital acquired. The growth is the issue that the consultant provides for us, you know, and that's part of what we're gonna have to look at. So would the 2% be more aggressive in the following year? Probably so. Your needs are within budget for this anticipated year with the existing 2%, correct?
Correct. I think to make you feel a little bit more at ease about your question, in order for us to plan additional projects than what we already have on the CIP would take well more than 12 months. And to, even though you might increase the funding or our rates by 1%, it's not going to cover a tremendous amount of additional capital. It may cover a little bit more debt service or something like that, but it's not going to be, you know, if we went from a 2% to a 3%, that's not going to increase our revenues such that we can take on, you know, another $10 million project. Yeah.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if it's a question that Dave can answer or perhaps you, Bill. On Wednesday, we were awarded that $305 million. What is that gonna come in and be used for?
Well, so for the subplanting of the expenses for the cooperative overall, that's headwaters funds that are provided by WIFIA to be able to apply throughout the projects that we have allocated. So it really gets spread throughout the entire group as we go forward by the same percentages that those members have participation in each of those individual projects. Anything beyond that, David?
No, sir. You're right on target. It's to pay for what's already planned.
You know, when we talk about our West Well Field, it's gonna be a $265 million project in and of a sense, roughly. And so that gets, you know, 50% contribution from SWIFT MUD. Can you imagine doing this without that? You know, it's mind-boggling, and plus, costs continue to rise, and that's just one piece of the total cooperative. One of the great benefits of this cooperative is watching how well the counties, cities are all working so well together, probably at the best time ever in our history because of the need for water. You know, when you talk about what's the most basic need we have, it starts with water. And so making certain in a time where we are one of the fastest-growing states in the nation and we are the fastest-growing county in that state, for us to make certain we have water allocated, which takes six to eight years to get out of the ground, ready to roll and work, is now. And so these accelerated efforts and the support of SWIFT MUD and WIFIA in the process of this and the financing and the cooperation of this group and the saving of interest by even using commercial banking as we bridge some of the utilization of that to lower the interest rate expense has really been wonderful to see. And so I think at an uncomparable pace, the county is cooperating among all the cities in a wonderful way.
And it was, I guess it was that East Well Field will connect all the way from Bartow all the way to Haynes City from Lake Wells, it's gonna make water for everybody.
Right. So that you think about water as becoming squishy within, in the county because you can move it wherever it needs to be, and there will be allocations, and there may be allocations that cities decide to share, you know, over the course of time with this. But it gives a connectedness throughout the county that we wouldn't have otherwise. And when, and once we have it in place, Lake Wells is opting currently not to participate and do one, do a study of maybe doing it by themselves. I highly believe they will come running back going, oops, you know, we really didn't mean that. We realize what the costs are because the costs are so great. And so when we do it cooperatively and then get the district, SWIFT MUD being the district support behind it, then it becomes an affordable way to grow. It's going to force the coasts ultimately to have to desalinate. You know, we, that's where their water's gonna need to come from on a growing basis. This is kind of the last group effort using the aquifers together and keeping the middle, center cities protected by the water supply that's available to them. And there's not gonna be more to be able to do. And our going to the lower aquifer and having to do test wells to make sure we put all of the additional sludge that we pump out that we don't keep and want to put back down in there in place is an extremely costly project, but it's a responsible one on a sustainable basis. Lake Wells, Eagle Lake is lamp pit. Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to maintain that budget and that you're comfortable in it. Thank you.
All right. Well, good morning. I'm gonna talk about some of the enterprise funds and special revenue funds. First one we're gonna start with is Lakeland Electric. As you know, we're going to do a 3.5% rate increase in October. This is what, number two of three in total that are planned. Part of our revenues this year, recognize, oh, go on there. Nope. Nate? Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Nate. All right. Part of the revenues that we are recognizing this year is an 8/10 of a percent in reduction in load. Discussing that with Gina Jacoby and her load forecaster, what they realize is the biggest part of that's energy efficiency with the possibility, some folks in the residential areas that are using less electricity just due to inflation or whatever else that may be impacting them. But right now, it's 8/10 of a percent below. As you know, we are presently in the market to borrow $170 million. $100 million of that is going to refund variable rate debt that we have offset with swaps. That'll be the last bit that we have in the city, especially for Lakeland Electric. $70 million is for the completion of the rice engines that we had borrowed some of those monies to help pay for the repairs on Unit 5. Our estimate is finishing '24 with 177 days cash. That's very close to our preferred 180 days. Lakeland Electric's done a great job in the past of maintaining that or close to that. Parking, no changes there. We've, we run very close in parking. Sometimes we make a little money, sometimes we lose a little bit, but on average, it's fairly flat. The maintenance and capital costs associated with the parking garages have always been funded from the transportation fund. That continues. Parking recently completed a rate study, and they are reviewing that with the plan that they're going to come to you in September with the recommendations, discussions, gain input from you, as well as talk to the stakeholders to make sure that everybody's on board with potential rate structure changes as well as changes to, say, enforcement hours and those types of things. On a side note, the Heritage Garage is still on track. That will be paid off in late '25, early '26. Right now, the revenues from the Heritage Garage are going into the Public Improvement Fund, who is satisfying that debt. Once that debt is satisfied, then all the revenue will go into the parking fund to offset that. And we're, just as a reminder, we're in a condo association with Aspire and with the hospital and with MidFlorida on that garage, and it's an ideal scenario.
That's another one.
Right. It's an ideal scenario. Really, really great partners, and it's managed well. So Stormwater, we just finished this year, the five annual rate increases of 5% that were planned. We did a rate study in 2016. The commission then planned to implement that in 5% increments over five years. I believe we paused it one year, maybe 2020 or something, downturn in the economy. So this was the last year. What we're gonna do is reevaluate where we stand, make sure that we can identify those projects that we believe are additional projects that could arise. You know, we can't necessarily predict when the state is going to define a lake in need of additional investment, but we can, we can do our best to project. And so that's part of what Lori's team's doing, will be doing this next fiscal year. She'll then hire a consultant to do an evaluation. Part of that is laying out our needs and then doing a comparison to the fees that are being charged throughout our comparable areas. So it's a combination of both to get there. We're at, right now, $9.72 per equivalent residential unit, ERU. That's for 5,000 square feet. So there's, part of the rate study will go into, what do we, what do we do with that? Right now, we are, I think we are providing an allowance of 75% of those fees back to folks. So that'll be part of the discussion that the consultants will go through. Okay?
Questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mike. Mine is back on the Lakeland Electric. So when you talk about the $170 million bond issuing $100 million for the refunding of variable
Right now we are, I think we are providing an allowance of 75% of those fees back to folks. So that'll be part of the discussion that the, that the consultants will go through. Okay?
Questions on those?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mike. Mine is back on the Lakeland Electric. So when you talk about the $170 million bond issuing 100 million for the refunding of variable debt, just, you know, so that the public knows, so that's like a refinance to take advantage of lower rates.
Yes.
So it's debt we currently have, but you're doing a refunding so that we take advantage of lower rates. I just, it, it looks really crazy to see that we're taking out $170 million bond issuing, knowing that we did that last year for the Rice engine. So I just thought that needed a little bit of a clarification point for the public's perspective. I know that at a state level and at a federal level, we advocate for advanced refunding to, to be able to refinance and take advantage of those. But we obviously were at that point, not needing an advance refunding, but we are at a point we could take advantage. Could you give us a little bit of?
Sure. And I'm, yes. Glad to. Part of our concern and, and most folks concerned is, is variable rate debt can be somewhat of a, of an unknown at times. We have been very fortunate that we're able to enter into swap agreements such that our variable rate is offset with fixed rate debt. What we are doing is if we can get out of the variable rate business, even if we have to spend a little money to do that, that is our goal and that is what we're doing. We've, we've always worked towards that method. We were able to, to do that a few years ago with another, another chunk about the same size. So this will be the last piece. To say it's, it is exactly a lower rate, not necessarily because the swaps are going to have different rates, but for the most part, it is better long-term if we can fix this, fix this debt out. But to your point, Commissioner, it is not new debt. That's correct. The only new debt will be the $70 million.
Yes.
Provides planning certainty.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, this is, I mean, it's something that, that anytime we're, well, right now we've, we've got two rating agency calls scheduled in the next week and they will absolutely bring up the fact that you've got, you've still got variable rate debt Lakeland. Well, yes, we've got it fixed out with swaps, however. So we are protected 100%, but it's nice to get out of the variable rate if you can. And we are in that position that we spend a little money to do it, it's worth it.
And you feel, so, you know, as a regular person living, you know, not the time to buy a house because of the interest rates, could you even clarify that you feel the rates that we're getting are at least not an inflationary rate? You know, a rate like, you know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, I went from, you know, three percent on my house to what, six or seven? You know, I think people in their mind might think is now the best time to do this swap? What are the rates looking like? So I just, I just want to make sure $100 million is a lot of money. So just for a clarifying point, you know, could you speak to the rates?
Financially, it is in our best interest to, to go this route. We would never take on seven percent debt to get rid of four percent debt. That, that, you know, we would never recommend such a thing. What we will do is as we get closer to it, we'll absolutely bring it to you as we have to, to explain the deal and, and explain what the rates will be at the time and why. Understand too, part of what we do is, for example, on say the $70 million in new money, we, we, we ladder that such that we're not going to have great rises in debt service. We, we project, if you went into Jeff Stern's office, he's got the projections, he is, he lives in there. And so he can show you what the debt is for each one of the case, you know, for example, Lakeland Electric. And so what we're going to do is, is we're going to ladder it such that as debt starts to fall off, that's when more of the principal is paid on the 70 million such that we don't have to affect our rate payers by saying, oh, by the way, we need this much extra because we are now taking on $70 million with the debt. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Music.
What does, thank you. Mike, what does the 170, say, seven days on cash represent? How much?
Ooh, that is a good question. I will, I'll answer that in a second because I don't know with them. I can tell you the general fund like that, but I can't remember with them how many days that is.
Okay, just whenever, whenever you get that number.
I think it's in the 200s, 200,000 per day, but, but Dee, can you grab that for me? Thank you. Probably in the 200s.
Other questions? All right, continue, sir, please.
Hey, thank you. And please, I'll stop after every one of these.
Each page would be good.
Yes, thank you. I sure will. So airport, same thing as, as you know, you know, the easiest thing to do would just have been to say that, that Chris and Adam are geniuses and they're surrounded by geniuses and move right along, but they are doing very well. We are at 100% occupancy. I was, it was seamless transition from, from Gene Conrad, Chris, and Chris's team, they have the same mindset of let's be as diversified as we can with our leases such that if the market changes in any one direction, we are not just reliant upon one source of, of revenues. They are very diversified and in their mindset there. We are, as far as small changes we're going to see this next year, obviously the ramp expansion is, is allowing us to go to 13 flights a day in and out in October for, for Amazon. The, the flights themselves were up about 8,000 by the end of the year. So we should be at about 150,000 operations for the year, which is, which is outstanding. About 6,000 of that is sun and funds. So that gives you order of magnitude that there's a tremendous amount of activity going on out there on a regular basis. And so we're very satisfied with, you know, the, like so many of these funds, they're providing 10-year, five to 10-year projections and we are seeing a very healthy airport project and even projecting for a very conservative growth going forward. So if there were a downturn in the economy, we are still in a very good position. So we're comfortable with, with that. Okay? Questions about?
Slightly related, but just because we have had the Hughes application in place for the routing and we were anticipating by the end of the year, making certain that that might be locked in. And I know our airport complaints are lessened and you mentioned the 13, which is why I'm bringing that up. What is our progress report on that?
So as of about a week and a half ago, we were updated. Now, we're working on the environmental side, the implementation side where it gets put into the charts. It'll get flown hopefully in September. They have to do the flight checks and make sure everything's good. It, you know, it looks good on the computer and everything, but physically fly it. And publication, we're still, we're on target for, for this winter.
Wonderful.
I would suspect December, January if I was to suspect.
Wonderful. So on target. Good. Very good. Thank you. And I think that's important because it's talking about the airport and knowing that we're doing a great job with occupancy, it's also good to know that the complaints have lessened because of the patterns that have been flown. And to know that this lock-in then becomes the long-term goal, which mitigates that to the best extents possible, that's also a great part of the success of the airport that is kind of unmentioned.
Good comments, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, the, to even further the importance of that, and you're really alluding to it is, you know, we, we've still got opportunity at the airport. And so we expect that operations will continue to increase. And so to be able to mitigate that, you know, before we even see those increased operations is going to be important. And so as you've said, as, as Chris has suggested, we are on task. A lot of that is out of our control, but we are certainly monitoring that and having the conversations as they're needed.
When we look at this 100% occupancy, we're talking about hangar space, not landing capacities.
Correct. That's our, you know, 2 million plus square feet of facilities that we own and maintain and lease and rent. Yes, we're always full.
We're full. Commissioner McClellan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris. On that note, I think you had talked about this at one point, the, the possibility of adding hangars or, you know, additional buildings on, on our property, you believe you could fill those if we had additional spaces, there a thought on, you know, increasing our available real estate in the near future?
Absolutely. You know, there's strong demand right now for even private leases where they lease just the ground from the airport and build their facility on top of that ground. That's been increasing, the demand for that is, we're getting calls all the time. We are continually, continuously getting, turning people down for, you know, 10,000 square foot or 15,000 square foot space because we are at 100% occupancy, which is awesome that we're at 100% occupancy because we have some great, strong tenants on the airport. You know, our turnover rate on the airport is next to nothing, which is a positive because it means our businesses and our flight schools and such are, are doing well and they're surviving easily, you know, in, in, in our, in our area. But yes, we're doing, we did that spec build, 10,000 square foot hangar. We're actually hopefully getting under construction this, this, this month, or well, beginning of next month. And we have, you know, two tenants already ready for that building. And if we did that all across the airport, I think, you know, we could build five, six of these things and have them leased out immediately. You know, Sean and I just had a really good discussion about building hangars. If it wasn't budget time for Mike, we would have already had that discussion. Mike and I have touched on it, but, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about how we do this. You know, one of the biggest challenges that we have right now is cost of construction, the materials to build. You know, it used to be $126 a square foot to build a facility. We're looking at 170 to $180 a square foot to build a facility. I mean, that's a big difference in costs. And it's all on what the market can bear for what our rental rates are then too, right? We have to be, pigs are cute and hawks get slaughtered. We like to be the cute pigs, right? We want to make a good, we want to be able to make a good rental rate, but we don't want to, you know, price our tenants, you know, to death. You know, we need to support their business and aviation in our, in our community. So those are the challenges. But yes, if I could build five, 10,000 square foot hangars next week, I would have them filled up before they were completed. We have 26 airplanes on a waiting list for T-hangers. But the problem is with T-hangers right now, it's a little over $2 million to build a 10-unit.
What's a T-hanger?
A T-hanger is where it just fits one airplane and they're all back tail to tail. And it's usually about 10 airplanes in, in a building, 10 bays. The problem is with the construction costs, it's about a 45-year return on investment for us to do that. It, it just doesn't make sense to build that building right now.
Or your, or your rental rates go up dramatically.
Or rental rates go up. And if you kill general aviation, you don't have commercial aviation, right?
Right.
Yep.
So it becomes a quandary. Commissioner McClellan.
Chris, when you look at the master plan that you guys work from, does that, are the discussions about new builds and the think, the forward thinking that you guys do so well out there, is that part of that master plan that you did originally that you all have been working from, from the last several years?
Yes, it, it is part of the master plan. You know, the master plan identified, especially on the north side of the airport, specific plots for hangars. I think as of last week, the north side is full.
Yeah.
We have no space left on the north side to build, whether it be a private land lease or whether it be, you know, the airport, all spaces are spoken for. Then it shows on the master plan more general development areas. And those are what we're diving into right now is how do we make them efficient? How do we get the most utilization of the land that's there? And the big discussion is, is how much of this land do we lease for, for private to build? And how much of this do we retain for the city to build, the airport to build? Right? That's a big discussion that we are in right now.
I think it's really, sorry. I think it's really important just to remember that you all had that vision in 2010 or whenever that plan was initiated and, and that you continue to work from it. Because I think that's really important that that's, I believe that your successes out there are because there was time and effort and fortitude and, and visioning to make that game plan and work from it. And of course tweak it over time as well as what the needs are, like you're saying. If you're full in one section, you know, how do you pivot or how do you include those other parcels and to the best of your abilities with regard to the economy and what's needed and market rates and all that. It's a, it's a very, it's, it's an impressive alchemy of what, of how you all work out there. So thank you. And I, and I always just think it's important for the public to understand that the time that was taken to do that in the beginning is still what you all are looking at and tweaking.
Yeah. And Gene Conrad taught me something very important and I use it to this day is we pick a direction and we will of course adjust as we go, but we are moving in a direction at all times.
And part of the, the five hangars versus a larger MRO, for example, that might be built for a, you know, picking up a commercial carrier that would like to be able to utilize something central that's not sitting at either Tampa or Orlando, those kinds of things that we could do, yeah, those are mutually exclusive decisions and knowing that you're maximizing the opportunity between them becomes, which the master plan shows, but it, you know, it's an imperative and it's, and it's closing five and making certain that we open up that space as well.
Right. And, and what we're doing is, is we've identified the areas of development on the master plan and on our airport and that Northwest Quad that is for large aircraft, right? Whether it's a cargo facility, whether it's an MRO facility, you know, whatever that may be, it's, that's where our large aircraft facility is going to go. So we've kind of earmarked the areas on the airport as to what we would like to see for development, what would be the best use for that space. And like that Northwest Quad, like we're talking along Drainfield, that needs to be large aircraft, you know, narrow body, wide body type stuff.
Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, on the sales side, if you're closing 100% of your sales, your, your price is too low, right? You need to consider, you need to consider raising that. So how do we, how do we balance treating our, you know, are the, the people that we want up there, our, you know, schools and things like that without pricing them out of the market, especially for those that have been there for a long time and have helped us get where we are? How do we, how do we do that and that, and then still maximize our rent rate as much as we can to be able to have the money to be able to build more spaces? I mean, how do, how are you, you and your team balancing that?
So, so that's the tight rope that we walk, right? So I will give you a, for instance, that we've been doing a lot of, we've been doing a few appraisals on, on our private leaseholders' properties. So we come in and we appraise the ground, right? We don't appraise the building because that's an asset of the, the leasing. So we appraise the ground and we set, from that appraisal, we set our per square foot rate. So for instance, in the seven years that I've been here at the airport, our per square foot lease rate was lower. It was, you know, in the twenties and it was in the lower thirties and we're at 40 cents a square foot right now for bare ground to build your hangar facility on. And that's in accordance with, with the value of the property.
Those leases are typically how long?
They're 30 years with two 10-year extensions for a total of 50 years. Yep.
Thank you.
And, and as far as for rental, because there's a big difference between the lease rates and rental rates, right? Rental rates have a whole nother, you know, it goes off the age of building, it goes off of, you know, what we are responsible for as the airport, right? If we're responsible for everything under the sun of that building, it's going to be a higher rental rate than if the tenant is responsible for, you know, you know, using NOAA as an example, we do everything their facilities does, the cleaning and taking out the trash and, right? So they pay us quite a bit more. But if you have a more self-sufficient business, the square foot rate is lower. And we also compare our rates, especially for like the T-hangers, for the general aviation folks, we compare our rates to the, to the area, right? There are surveys done every couple of years by FDOT and we compare our rates accordingly to the airports around us as well.
And the mixed use, you know, obviously seems to make sense because you want to build off of that because you don't know, you know, where the economy is going to go.
Absolutely.
And obviously you guys are, you're doing wonderful. I mean, everybody praises how well you guys are doing. But again, I just look at that, you know, at that 100%, it always pushes me a little bit to say, can we, you know, can we squeeze a little bit more without squeezing the individual to where it's not profitable? So, thank you.
Commissioner McClellan.
And just on that note, I think what is done out at the airport through Sun and Fund and through the Aerospace Academy and through some of those pilot, you know, the flight schools and things we have, we know across the board nationally and worldwide that we are, you know, losing pilots to retirement every single day. So I don't think you can show the return on investments for some of those anchor institutions because it's not as quantifiable in the long run. But I do think in the long run, our commitment to that as a city is really important and invaluable to not only the aerospace industries, but to all of the, the ground workers and everything else that we're cultivating out there. Because for the future, you know, I've been flying all summer and, and we need more pilots and more planes. And to be on the front end of that, I think is just a wonderful aspiration that the city of Lakeland committed to a long time ago. So I think there's always that nebulous and hard to quantify piece when we're looking at some of those institutional, those anchor institutions out there that I, I'm glad that we are careful about that and that we are very thoughtful in, in supporting those mechanisms as well as, you know, the NOAA's and the Drakken's and, and private industry.
And a follow-up on that, when, when someone's coming to you and they're saying, hey, you know, we're, we're looking at a space and you just don't have it. Are you finding that it's newcomers coming in looking for property that doesn't have it or is it expansion? Where, what kind of percentage are you looking at that?
So as far as for rental space?
Yes, sir.
For rental space, it's. Uh, for rental space, it's businesses, I talked to a business in Sebring the other day that would like to move their helicopter repair to Lakeland. Um, and a couple of reasons were, one, because of our education programs, there, there is mechanics, um, available, right, in our community, right? So he looks at our community and says, the community has better employees to offer, you know, I don't have that in Sebring. So they're looking to move, um, a lot of reasons that people are looking to move as well as the central location, right? Um, our location for years has been our biggest downfall and our biggest asset, right? When it, it's our downfall when we talk airline development, but it's our, it, it's our asset when we talk about all this other aviation and activity. So, um, but, you know, for the most part, it's, it is some new startups, we're a little harder on the, on the new startups. We do, we ask for business plans. We, we want to see what their business is all about, what kind of contracts they have, um, all that kind of stuff too. So, you know, we're, we're, I wouldn't say that we're, we're not discriminer, discriminating against anybody's business because we'll take any aviation business that's out there, but we are very picky.
Could be.
Good, as you should, yeah.
Yeah, about our, about who, who and what, and, and what kind of term and what kind of deal.
You might comment too, on individual hangars for corporate jets are different.
Correct. Yep. So if, if it's an individual who is, who, who has a corporate jet or a, uh, you know, an airplane that they, they rent out a little bit, um, you know, those, those, those individuals, we have a couple of them and we just never have problems. They're higher on the totem pole in the, in the barrel.
And protecting the jet, they want to spend the money to be able to have a building that does it.
Completely.
So what caps our 40 cents lease rate?
What caps it?
Yeah. Is it us?
Yes. It's, it's value. I mean, it's, it's just the value of, of the land, what's fair.
We could look at that too. Uh, we've gone long on this and it would make it seem like you're an underperformer. Commissioner McClellan.
I love it.
Well, you know, when I was listening to Commissioner Music just talk about what do we do when we're 100% occupied? Um, you know, just sitting on the TDC and everything, it's usually like an 85% or 90% you know, occupancy rate that you're like, we need more hotels or we need more, um, Airbnbs. So at this 100% mark, I'm just curious, you know, I know, you know, with government, it's tricky and there are rules to follow, but if we're getting the land lease rate, and that's what we typically do, just curious if there are construction companies who could be in a P3 to where they built the hangars and then they built it at a lower rate so that you could have a rent rate, but in perpetuity they received a part of that rent, you know, that came from the facility. You know, just wondering if there's outside of the box models that you could, to get some things built sooner rather than later, even though construction costs are high, if you work with a developer or construction company, like I know that, that, that there are situations where construction companies have built schools, for instance, and then the school, you know, pays its lease. So, um, just, you know, curious if you've, uh, checked into anything like that?
So we, we have talked with, with folks, um, about partnering. Um, right now we're working on a build, um, with, um, it's, uh, Space Florida. Um, they're an organization and they, they've kind of front a bunch of money. We have a, we have a person who, or a business that would like to, to utilize their, their services. So we're working with them to, to move forward on that. That's something that's in the beginning stages, that we're in the mountains of paperwork phase. Um, uh, so, you know, we, we do, um, the, the hard part, aviation is a risky business. And, and the hard part for us also is, is the difference between, you know, private business and government, there, there's a difference in how we move and how we do and how we take care of things. As far as, um, you know, us 100% owning the facility is really what we, we like to have that control partnerships have not worked well on the airport in the past. Um, so I guess we, we don't necessarily shy away from them, but we're very cautious when we, when we do the discussions as to who controls and, and does what. But these are all stuff that we need to consider moving forward. Um, but until construction costs, which they are leveling out and hopefully it will turn and start going down, you know, until that happens, it's very difficult to build right now for us. And, and, and debt, right? That's the other part that we haven't talked anything about, but you know, we are, the airport does carry debt and we have to make debt payments, 26, I believe it is. We have a large debt payment that we're being very cautious to make sure that we have that money sitting to the side. So after that, I think we're going to be able to take a breath and say, hey, we have a million dollars that we can put up cash so we can only borrow, or so we only have to borrow a million dollars to build, right? But until that debt payments all the way, I don't have that million dollars to, to front.
And a one last comment from Commissioner.
And that's all, and that's really all it was. And it was just leveraging off of your comment that, you know, when, when you have a department that's doing so well, you almost just want to keep working with them because what they're doing is so great. You know, when you have a, when you have a, a rock star, you just want to keep going. I just wanted to say, yes, it's, it's not from a beating standpoint, it's from a, you know, what you and your team is doing so well, I just want to continue to enjoy it. So thank you.
And, and to Mr. Brosart, if we had some opportunity during the course of a year to do something that's really leveraging well and a need to build at the airport, we'd address those, that separately. You might want to talk about that.
Absolutely. We always have and, and we always will. We don't, budget time has nothing to do with borrowing money. If we have to, we do an appropriation and, and go forward. And to, to Chris's point, we've had those discussions and so we will continue to have those discussions and we'll, we'll help the airport get money whenever they need it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it, Chris.
Okay.
All right.
We're going to move on to, uh, Solid Waste. Solid Waste in, in, uh, our view is, is another one that is a rock star. They continue to, to find ways to keep our rates in the lower quartile while providing excellent service. They, right now, we don't see any need for a rate increase in the next three to five years, and that's even with the transfer station that's coming. Now, something could change, the, the prices of the transfer station could increase more than we anticipate, in which case we may have to adjust. But right now, uh, I'm excited about the transfer station as, as well because we're going to reap benefits, uh, that it's going to, to provide for this community and, and others for a good while. And what I mean by that is by having this transfer station in Northside, we're going to have our, our coworkers working, uh, more productively. We're not going to be driving our trucks all the way down to Winter Lake Road and sitting in a queue, uh, to go up on top of the mountain and get stuck. And you're out of service for an hour and a half while you're waiting to get pulled out and hopefully nothing breaks on your truck. That's, that's going to be gone for many of our vehicles. Besides that, we'll be able to provide this service to others in surrounding communities, which will then help us pay the debt down faster and keep our rates low. And so it'll be a great benefit for everybody when, when that happens. So to the rates, um, this is why I say they're, they're doing fantastic. When we see costs going up at the landfill, costs of the vehicles and everything else, our rates are still one of two of the 13 we used and we've, we've traditionally benchmarked 13 communities ranging from Winter Haven, Bartow to Tampa, Orlando, Largo, Claremont. So it's throughout the plant city, throughout big and small Riverview. Of those, uh, we're the second lowest. Bartow is $18.75 and we're $19.01 per month. We're 26 cents a month more expensive than Bartow. And it ranges up to, uh, these are all 2023 rates, so they all could change for this 24, but they range all the way to Tampa, I think was just shy of $35 a month. So they're continuing to do a very good job with that without having to ask the citizens to provide more. And they are a full range of services. I live just outside the city in the county. I don't get bulk pickup anymore. Uh, pretty soon, I'm not going to get recycling anymore. We do all that for, for our folks and for that price, that's just, that's just great. So, very encouraging. You should be excited about that.
It's wonderful and so efficiently done and so reliable.
Yeah.
On a daily basis. It's, they, it's just they do it all right. Does, does this mean recycling costs are pretty neutral in terms of?
Well, commodity costs have, have traditionally always go up and down. And so we are still not doing well. It does cost us more to recycle. I mean, I completely understand the math behind, the logic behind why the county has said, we, we can't afford to do this anymore. We are still able to keep our rates where they are and continue to do it because that's the philosophy that the commission has provided to us of let's do this for the right reasons. And so we can continue to do that with the rates that we have. But yes, you, you are paying much more in today's market with the commodities. Again, it could change in six months and, and all of a sudden somebody's interested in glass for some reason or cardboard or whatever it was, but right now it's, you're, you're paying more. Okay?
Other question, uh, no other questions? Okay. Go ahead, please.
Hey, we'll, we'll slide on to the, to the CRAs. Uh, what we've, what we recognize with, with the CRAs is, uh, the same thing we're going to talk about in a little bit with the general fund. We've seen, uh, property value growth with, with the CRAs, uh, which is, which is very, very good. Uh, I think we saw a little lower 9% growth in Dixieland. I think we're, uh, 15% and then, uh, and then I think 17% accordingly. I'll, I'll verify that, um, for, for downtown and midtown respectively. Uh, what's, what's very important for us to remember is that two of them, the, the Dixieland and Midtown sunset in '31. And so, and, and monies to be expended through '32. And so if you look at their 10-year capital plan, uh, it, it, it stops after 2032. So a commission at some point will have to make that decision of whether or not to extend that. But for right now, it shows as, as, as no expenses or revenues in 20, in 2033 for those two. And Dixieland, uh, excuse me, and downtown is 2035 sunset with expenditure of, of those monies in 2036. So we still show a 10-year for, for them. Uh, Valerie and her team do a great job, uh, of projecting those monies out as Elise did prior. Uh, and so those monies are committed in certain areas throughout each of those without growing, uh, tremendous surplus. We look at that on a regular basis to make sure that, that those monies are not just sitting, sitting idle, that they are being used for the blight that, that they're required to be used for, so.
Any CRAs questions? Yes, coming from McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike. And, uh, Mike, I know the CRA Advisory Board, we get those numbers on the, the balances and can, we have those as well, the commission, just to know what the reasonable surplus balances are.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yep, yep. It'll, it'll be in the, it'll be in the budget, but I can send you what we have prior to, absolutely. I'll send it to, to Sean later and, and he'll email them out to you.
That would be great. I think it's always good to have that, that number and also a reminder of the projects that are in each area and where, you know, do we have, is there excess? Do we have more projects coming that, um, the, the surplus funds will be needed or where, what does that picture look like?
And so it may be, and I'm thinking about it, Valerie and I were talking yesterday and she was working on a, a few projects, so it may be Monday. Let's give her some time to, to finalize that and then she can give you what her preliminary budget looks like, uh, knowing that, like all the rest of them, you could ask us to, to change something between, between now and then.
Good point, Commissioner McLeod. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, let's take a look at assumptions.
This is really a, a high-level sheet in that we'll talk, I'll talk about the, the first bullet and then Sean will talk about the second, Joyce will talk about the third, and then, uh, Jim Reitberger from Bolton will talk about the last. He and Sean will talk about the last bullet. So the first one, uh, is, is the general fund. As we talked about, we, we gave a max controllable cost increase for folks of 2.75%, recognizing that we have, we have seen a, a great number of cost increases over the last, uh, last couple of years anyway, especially in chemicals. Uh, I know that in, in '21 and going into '22, we were seeing the cost of say chlorine and water, wastewater going up by 60, 70% and, and, and then the next year seeing it again. So what we could see is a couple, two, $300,000 increase in costs in one year for one entity, right? So we're, we're working through that as everybody is, right? So what, what Sean had done was, was said, okay, we're going to allow a, a target of controllable cost growth of 2.75%. You've got to justify it. If you happen to bang up against it or go above it, you absolutely have to prove why. So of the, the 30 primary, uh, budgetary departments in, inside the, the general fund, 27 of them came in at or below that target of not needing or asking for that money, actually coming in about $800,000 below that. The three divisions that exceeded their target, uh, two of them, as I mentioned, were, uh, were chemicals, parks and golf course, um, and, and Bob, and Bob and Rich Sloan was, was from the parks department as well as Brock and his team at Dustin at the golf course. What they, what they had talked about is the fact that, you know, kudos to like Harrell's fertilizer here in town because they actually worked with us to do what we could to get our costs as low as possible. So those, those, what they did was as you came into your budget meeting with, with, with Sean and the team, you actually had to come in and prove why you needed that extra. So they actually had talked to, say Harrell's in this example and say, here's our estimates, here's our estimates for next year based on costs for treating, even down to the, you know, it's nematodes or it's whatever it is, these are the types of chemicals we have to buy and here's the negotiated prices. So that's what they did. Fire same way. We knew that we were going to have additional costs above the target, uh, because we, we, and you'll see it in Sean's section, but we are hiring a new, uh, fire training officer. And with that, we had some additional costs associated with that as well as we're hiring the remaining 12 firefighters and 24 to get us to the Kelly days that we talked about. So we had some expenses associated with that. The only other, uh, large, uh, target increases that we recognized were again in water wastewater facilities and fleet. All of those are related to chemicals or petroleum, petroleum, or, or products that use petroleum as their base. So fleet, obviously they've seen that with tires and with, with fuels and oils and such and facilities with cleaning, cleaning chemicals and then of course water wastewater, we talked about with, with their required chemicals. So it, those were the other ones that popped up above the, the 2.75%. But again, they all, they all explained it during their budget meetings to the point where Sean was accepting that they had cut as much as they could in their other areas and still were slightly above. Questions?
Above the 2.75?
Above the, yes, sir. Where they were above the 2.75, but by some margin and.
Questions, comments? Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike. Mike, the 2.75% target growth, that's the same as last year, correct?
Last was 2.5%.
Okay.
Yes.
So in, in the neighborhood of, of that. And can you just tell us, how do you decide on that target every year?
Yeah, that's a good one. Uh, what we, what we try to do is look at what expenses we've been seeing the larger departments incur, uh, not, not office supplies and things like that. It's the larger ticket items that, that we, we are seeing, that we are recognizing the growth throughout the year and saying, okay, what, what does this translate to? We're also going to look at what's inflation, what's cost inflation, what's CPI? And then actually we back it off a little bit. What the, some of the departments that asked for originally was, was, in, in a couple of them that had seen the higher costs was, hey, can we be at three and a quarter, three and a half? Let's, let's do 275 and then we'll back into that, right? And so like I said, the fact that, that it was 800,000 below, maybe for some of these it could have been two and a half, right? Or, or thereabouts. And so part of it is a trust with the departments that you work with on a regular basis is that you, you, you know, they're going to ask for and prove what they need regardless of what, what that percentage is. And so we had very few that were banging up right against the, oh, I got to have it. But even if they did, here's the why, which was, which was the important part.
What's the peak you've ever seen in that number? In that assumption? Can you remember?
Maybe in the, maybe three, three and a quarter, maybe.
I was thinking probably in the three and a quarter range.
Yeah, probably 3.25 is probably the highest I can remember.
And it acknowledges inflation. And certainly CPI is at a higher rate than this, so, you know, that's an important thing to keep in mind.
And we've had those, you know, conversations, I mean, you know, with the commission. Certainly fuels up, you know, labor costs are up, materials are up. We've seen that in a lot of the contracts that we've discussed. And, you know, we've seen, you know, projects that we had, you know, planned and projected funding. And all of those have increased, you know, and we've had to adjust to that. So it, you know, we experienced the same cost increases and we're in an inflationary market and all of those costs are up. We've had those discussions. So, you know, increasing it over last year was needed, as Mike has discussed.
Commissioner McLeod, that addressed that for you.
Does. It's helpful to be reminded what last year's target was and, you know, the internal process that city management and staff department heads go through. And I think that helps us and the public understand, you know, how they got to that number.
Good.
I do have an answer to Commissioner Music's question. Gina Jacoby, who's actually upstairs listening but preparing for our rating agency presentations, texted me right away, $142 million is what we have.
Okay, thank you.
That's the total in surplus. And that actually works out to about 800 a day. She's got $142 million in surplus, so.
Other questions or comments by commissioners? Was, I had one, and I'm just trying to remember where. I have to go back and look and see.
Commissioner Music, not trying to step on you.
Okay, go ahead.
When, Mike, when you look in, your first bullet point there says there's 30 primary budget divisions and subdivisions inside there. How many, how many does, how many of those are encompassed in parks and rec?
What we did, let me, let me get that, get that sheet up. Apologize. Some, if we could combine them, we did. There it is. So for parks, we had parks, recreation libraries, the branch library, the cemeteries, and Cleveland Heights. So if that helps.
That's my question, yes, sir.
Whereas, like, say, for fleet, excuse me, for, like, say, police or fire. We just did police or we just did fire. They may have internal centers inside there, but it's, we just did police, right? So if that helps at all.
That is helpful. That's a good question.
Okay.
Commissioner Reed.
Sean touched on just briefly, where does fuel come in this area?
Does fuel?
Fuel cost.
Fuel cost, yeah.
Fuel cost. That's in our fleet fund.
That's for everybody, fire, police, everything's in, built in one?
Well, fire has theirs separately. But for everybody else, they, it's in fleet. They pay for it all and then they bill it out in individual line items by department, based on prior year's usage and any other factors that they may have to, you know, say they know that they're going to hire five new people with five new trucks. Well, then, in that case, their usage is going to go up. And so they'll let Mr. McLean know that and adjust that allocation accordingly.
I would think that'd be difficult, the way the flexibility of prices are today.
It is.
On a weekly basis, I see under $20 a gallon.
Yes, sir. And I can assure you that Mr. McLean worries about that. And he and I chat often throughout the year to make sure that we have sufficient monies. And, you know, it gets close where, you know, in a year, we may have to consider coming to the commission. There have been a couple of years where we have had to come to the commission and say, forgive us, we have to ask for an appropriation. We've worked with the departments and this is how we're proposing to fund it. So I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to not have to do that this year. So, but it is hard to, it is very hard to project. It really is.
And LPD is not broken, is within fleet?
Right, they fuel up themselves.
Got it.
But, yeah.
Okay. Why is fire broken out? On fuel?
It's been that way for a long time. And I don't remember the reason as to why. They have their own fleet services as well. But they can fuel up anywhere. And if they fuel up at fleet, then they use fleet and we get billed for it. But we budget it separately for them.
Any other questions in that regard? All right, sir. Anything, what else, other funds? You've done, right?
That's, yes, sir, that's it, sure.
Okay. All right, that brings us to service-related personnel assumptions.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we, if it's okay, why don't we take a break at this time? Because then we're going to hit, run in our presentations to kind of lead us up to lunch. So this is probably a good appropriate time.
Three-minute break, yeah. All right, so we'll be back in about 10 minutes. How's that?
Thank you.
I like it.
We are going to rebegin with the service-related personnel assumptions by our city manager, Sean Charaus. So, Mr. Charaus? The position changes in 24.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, everyone, and appreciate the needed break there. And as I said, we'll kind of have a run here on some of the presentations that we have scheduled next. The very next item to be discussed is service-related personnel assumptions that at least momentarily have been programmed into the proposed budget. And, you know, what I would say about the additions, and there are, I think it's a total net of nine new positions that are being proposed, and you will see as I go through them, that the vast majority, almost all of them, are just related to service delivery needs. As has been, you know, referenced, and it's no surprise to anyone, we are a growing community, and as we grow in population and our number of citizens and customers, it becomes, you know, a need then to add personnel in order to be able to continue to meet those service needs. And so, if you look back at, you know, what I'll just, our personnel headcount, if you look back historically and you go back to 2018, in 2018, we had approximately 43 residences per employee as a method of measurement. So, 43 residences as a, per employee. If you look at that after 2022, we are up to 50. So, we've increased from 43 residences up to 50 per employee when you just divide that out over the headcount. So, again, you'll see that these requests are really related to service delivery and being able to keep up with the service delivery while we are serving more citizens and customers. With that...
Forty-three to 50, what was the time period?
From 2018 to 2022. Thank you. So, the positions that have, at least for now, been programmed into the budget include, in the general fund, you will see a Lakeland Fire Department Training Officer. As you're aware, we have added firefighters, fire personnel, and so there's a need then to add a training officer to assist in the volume of training, a higher volume of training now, and those needs because of the increase in staffing over the past few years at the Lakeland Fire Department. In our Human Resources Department, we have one HR specialist that is being added, that's Employee and Labor Relations, and what is occurring there is we have our HR labor management position is retiring from the City of Lakeland, and we are going to be transferring some of those duties over to the City Attorney's Office. And, but, so it will be downgraded from a manager to a specialist to accommodate some of the other needs that that employee has historically been responsible for. At the airport, there is an addition of an accounting clerk and one airport operations coordinator. In solid waste, as Mike mentioned earlier, an incredibly efficient operation in solid waste, but again, based on what we are serving now and the numbers and the volume, we are adding one solid waste driver. In fleet management, we're actually, there's a deletion there, we're going to delete an accounting clerk position. In purchasing and stores, we have one inventory control specialist that is needed. And then, in the water utilities, and we discussed this at the very beginning of our discussions this morning with all of the growth that we have, both residentially and commercially, in water utilities, we need to add one water utilities line construction inspector, we need to add one pipe fitter, one water utilities engineer, and a water utilities engineering technician-trainee position. So, again, I think that balances out or nets to be nine new additions to our headcount, and as I've stated, it's related to the growth, the increased service needs that are associated with that growth, and, but is still managed very efficiently within each of our departments. With that, I will stand for any questions, and we also have department directors from each of these departments in the room if we need them as well.
Mr. Simmons.
Yeah, thank you. Just curious as to when did the growth begin to occur? Was it four years ago or within Lakeland? And obviously, we are growing. I'm just wondering, when did it occur? Do you know, have an idea?
Commissioner, just give me one second. I've got some information here that will probably help us. So, if we, the information that I gave a moment ago about the number of residences per employee, if you look at that as a method of measurement, and it looks like really from, as far back as the information that I have in front of me, at least, from 2014 until 2019, we were running pretty consistently there in each of those years at about 43 residences per employee. And then, it's really after 2019 and 2020, it went from 43.6, actually, up to 44.9. In 2021, it increased from 44.9 up to 47.8, and then again in 2022, from 47.8 to 49.8. So, again, pretty consistent from 2014 until 2019, but steady growth from 2019 through 2022.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions on the nine positions? Okay, let's continue. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to ask our Risk and Purchasing Director, Joyce Diaz, to come for presentation related to assumptions in our health insurance plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joyce Diaz, Risk and Purchasing Director. As Mike spoke to earlier about the seven-and-a-half percent increase on the health plan premium, we want to talk about some of the upgrades that we're doing to our medical benefit to include that increase. We're adding two tiers. We're adding medications with no out-of-pocket costs, and we're modifying one of the plan offerings. The medical premium increase of seven-and-a-half percent is a result of COVID and the aftermath, where the health plan was not as utilized for the typical medical events during the pandemic, yet we experienced, oh, oh, what's it doing? Sorry. We experienced unexpected costs where our medical usage...
We're holding a button down.
I didn't think I was pressing a button.
It's every time we press it, it's advancing.
Just advancing.
It's just continuing to advance.
I'll run it for now. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if for some reason it's just advancing.
Gotcha. It's doing it automatically.
See if it needs charging.
Okay. Let's go through this sentence again. "The medical premium increase of seven-and-a-half percent is a result of COVID and the aftermath, where the health plan was not as utilized for those typical medical events during the pandemic, yet we experienced unexpected costs due to the COVID testing and treatments." And then, in the later part of 2021, medical use then ramped up to catch up on those treatments, surgeries, and screenings for what was missed that prior year. Can you advance, please? "I'm pleased to announce that the current medical plan selections available to us, which are employee-retiree-only or employee-retiree-family, will be expanded to allow for retiree-plus-child or children and employee-retiree-plus-spouse. This will allow for four..." Thank you. "...four separate medical plan options available to us based on the members' needs. Our benefits broker, actuary, has provided data projections indicating that the additional tiers will benefit enrolled members and the health plan financial outlook." Next slide, please. "As part of the ongoing efforts to improve access and make prescription drugs more affordable, medications with no out-of-pocket costs will help members manage their chronic conditions like diabetes with strategies that include access to affordable prescription drugs such as insulin. Certain preferred prescription drug benefits were provided to fully insured plans January of 2023. The City of Lakeland is including it into its coverage effective January 1, 2024." Next slide, please. "With the modification of Plan A to reflect coverage under the Affordable Healthcare Act requirements, we can now offer two plans with preventative care covered at 100%, and that would be our Plan A and our EPO plan. The modified Plan A options cover preventative services and will not impose cost sharing onto members such as deductibles, copayments, or coinsurance for receipt of these services. These services are free when delivered by a doctor or other provider in the plan network. Additionally, all co-pays, emergency room, and pharmacy costs count towards the out-of-pocket maximum. The annual deductible will be $300 per person, and under the new tier structure, $500 for employee-retiree-plus-spouse, employee-retiree-plus-child or children, or for family coverage." I've prepared some examples of what a pay period change will look like for some of our most populated plans, which are Plan C and Plan D, where the majority of our employees and retirees are on one of those plans, Plan C and D. So, someone currently with Plan C family coverage with the current pay period, they're paying $284.25, and with the seven-and-a-half increase in January of '24, they will only increase $21.32 per pay period. With the new tier options, an employee who's currently on the family plan and then can change into the employee-plus-spouse option with open enrollment, they're, even with the seven-and-a-half percent increase, their pay period payment will be $7.71 more. With the Plan C, the family plan coverage currently that can change to employee-plus-children, they will recognize a $11.37 per pay period decrease in their premium deduction. Now, a note I just want to make is that retirees will have the same option to change from the family coverage to retiree-plus-spouse or retiree-plus-child or children, and that move will equate for them also a reduction in their premium cost as well. And then, the Plan D family coverage with the seven-and-a-half percent increase will be $17.53 more per pay period. Plan D family coverage moving to employee-plus-spouse will see a $3.51 per pay period decrease. And then, the Plan D family coverage moving to employee-plus-children will see a decrease of $9.35 per pay period. So, just as an additional...
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
When you have employee-plus-children and employee-plus-spouse, does employee-plus-children include spouse as well?
No.
So, is there an employee-plus-spouse-plus-children?
That would be the family plan coverage.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
That's okay. As an additional note, our benefits team will be scheduling education and informational sessions, and we'll be meeting with the employee and retiree groups to answer questions. We've got about two and a half months until open enrollment, so we're going to get as much information out as needed so that people understand what these changes mean to them. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Joyce. The seven-and-a-half percent premium increase, is that what you're seeing in the health insurance market, and was, were you expecting the number to be around that?
Typically, the trend for health insurance increases is somewhere between 7 and 10, depending on utilization. We had a couple of really difficult years with the pandemic and then the catch-up, and so it fluctuated a little bit, but this is where we landed for next year.
Commissioner Musick.
Two questions. One, when, early in the presentation, you'd mentioned some expenses from COVID. Were any of those reimbursable, and how did that play out?
We did get some reimbursements, but for the most part, those costs were attributed to the plan, to the tune of, I believe, close to a couple million dollars.
And secondly, you are mentioning like employees and retirees in part of that. Can you explain a little bit on the retiree coverage and how that works timeframe with, as they retire with Medicare, Medicaid, and things of that nature?
They're eligible to change their coverage plan when they have an event, a qualified event, such as being eligible for Medicare, and so they would come to our benefits team and work with them in changing their plan based on that need.
So, as employees, the expenses just pulled out of the paycheck? But if you're a retiree, you're just billed, just like you would a traditional plan? How's that?
A lot of our retirees are paid directly through payroll for their retirement, so it's still a deduction for them.
Okay, so it's just pulled out of retirement? Okay, just, okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. What is the maximum age for your children? Is it 21, 25, 18?
It varies. On the health plan, it's 26, if they are still in school, full-time student, and, you know, living at home or at a college where they're a student at. 26.
Questions? All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, you know, I want to make a comment for our employees that are in the room and who are watching and listening. That announcement that was just made is news to them. We have had, for several years, we've had employees who have expressed their desire to have more tier options in our health plan system, and so what is now being provided is going to give them those options that they have sought for a long time, and then everyone will need to kind of make their own individual decisions as to which one of those tiers work best for them. But as Joyce mentioned, for the employees, we will be getting out more information. We will do a video. Joyce and staff are prepared to do some training, and so there will be more information coming to the employees as we move forward.
Nice, thank you. That brings us to our wage and benefits study.
Okay, the next part of the presentation is going to be one of the lengthier parts of the presentation that we're going to have today until we get to the point of just the commission discussions, and so I'm going to give an intro for this particular section, and then you're going to hear from our consultant with Bolton Partners. As the commission is aware, for the past two years, during budgetary discussions and strategic planning meetings, we have been discussing the current status of the labor market in the United States, which is the most active labor market of our lifetime. These conditions are challenging for all U.S. employers, and that has been verified even locally when the mayor and I last year met with 10 of the largest employers in Lakeland, locally and across the country. Employers are adjusting work environments and enhancing pay and benefits in order to have better chances of retaining their current employees and recruiting employees when needed and necessary. Like most other employers, the City of Lakeland has been adjusting our work environment. We now have more methods for communicating with employees. We have options for hybrid remote work programs and alternative work schedules. We have increased our tuition reimbursement and have returned post-COVID to celebrating employees at our annual employee celebration event and our milestone service award programs, including the addition of two more categories to recognize five and 15 years of service milestones. We've also increased the monetary rewards for each tenure-related service milestone category. At the end of this calendar year, we will announce enhancements to our VIP awards program and a companion program for truly extraordinary performance that will include awarding employees time off when they are performing above requirements and expectations. Now, I will tell you, that concept came from the employees. You've heard me talk about the work group meetings that I had last year throughout the organization, and one of the questions that I was asking the employees was that in terms of recognition, what did they value? Was it monetary? What was it? And across the board, one of the things that was most common was that, you know, everybody's doing, working a lot more with a lot less. We talked about that a moment ago, you know, with all the growth and the services that need to be provided, and so they talked about a desire to, you know, to have more time off. Now, I will tell you, and there will be more information that will come out on this, but, you know, this process will be a refereed process. We will have multiple levels of review, including the city manager's office, before we are awarding time off to employees, and we will not be awarding time off and recognitions for employees who are doing a good job, doing their job. So, if they're, you know, meeting their duties and responsibilities, that's not really extraordinary. We're talking about truly extraordinary, above and beyond what the expectations are of those employees. But again, it will be an opportunity to award some time off and a refereed process, where there will be multiple levels of review, and we will be able to balance and make sure that there's no abuse of that type of a rewards program. The vast majority of these enhancements are being funded within existing budget at almost no added cost. In another effort to better retain and recruit employees, the City Commission recently approved extended... the city commission recently approved extending the drop program for general employees, the the police department, and our UW UA collective bargaining members in electric and water and wastewater from a five-year maximum option to an eight-year maximum option. Additionally, the commission's approval last year of the higher-than-traditional five percent across the board and two and a half percent merit pay increases in our current budget helped to move many of our general employees within the market competitive pay ranges for their job classifications. However, when I made these pay adjustment recommendations, I also informed the commission, the employees, and the public that those adjustments would help, but they would not provide the longer-term solutions needed. Those solutions would come in the form of a pay study. That pay study has now been completed. And again, you will receive those results from the city's consultants consultant in just a few minutes. Before that, however, I want to take a moment to provide some historical reality as to why we remain behind market pay in many of our general employee job classifications. There are four primary reasons that I want to discuss. The first being that the last time that we did a general employees' pay study was in 2017. Now, that's six years ago. The labor market has changed tremendously in the past six years. If you think about just the three years pre and post-COVID, our pay study goes back even three years prior to that for the for the six years since we last did the general employees' pay study. And there were problems with the city's implementation of that 2017 general employees' pay study. Primarily, it's that pay ranges were adjusted to market, but actual pay in employees' pockets were not. And so what happened in that in that pay study, and excuse my hand gestures, gestures, but it's just my way of of trying to better explain it, is that if if we had a market range for a job classification in 2017, and it was this from bottom to top, and if you had an employee who was paid right in the middle, so they were at the midpoint of the range, when the when the market comparison study came back and indicated that those job classification and those ranges needed to increase, we we increased the range, but we didn't put any pay in the employee's pocket. They actually then slid to the bottom, to the lower level of the range, instead of being at midpoint, which is where we're having still, and I will explain later, why we're still struggling to not be at the midpoint of those ranges. In that 2017 pay study, the only employees who received pay increases as a result of the study were the ones who, when their range moved, they fell out of the bottom. They were moved up to the bottom. But we really artificially pushed all of the employees to the bottom end of the pay ranges and lost our ability to be paying at the most competitive part of the pay range, which is the fiftieth percentile or the midpoint of those pay ranges. I also want to compare that to our historical process and what we've done when we've negotiated with our collective bargaining units, the various collective bargaining units. And and the commission has experienced this. And if you think about in in those negotiations and when we have a contract in place and 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 each one of those include a market pay analysis of of those employees in those bargaining units, you're familiar with when when we make a percentage adjustment, it does not just adjust their ranges, as I demonstrated a moment ago for the general employees. It actually are percentage increases that they received on their pay. It's money in their pockets. And so it's it's been treated differently with our collective bargaining unit employees than we've we've treated our general employees. Another topic, the second issue that I want to discuss is that in fiscal year 2021, if you will recall, we provided no across-the-board or merit increases for the general employees. Well, we we just fell further behind. As I explained a moment ago, the effects of the way that the the 2017 wage study was implemented pushed people into the bottom of the ranges. And so whenever in 2021, we did no across-the-board or merit adjustments, it it really just stranded everybody where they were and kept them in those lower ranges. In 2021, just to again, make the point of how we put pay in pockets in some areas and not in others, even though the general employees and some of the other collective bargaining units did not receive an across-the-board or merit increase. In that same year, our police union members, however, did receive increases. The lieutenants received over a seven percent increase. Sergeants received over a nine percent increase. And police officers received over an eleven percent increase. And again, the point that I really want to make there is when I state those increases, those were increases to their pay, not just their pay ranges. It put money in their pockets. And that's where we fell short in 2017 and then again in 2021. Another issue that we're dealing with and why we are lagging behind for the general employees is is the current labor market. As the mayor and I met with the largest employers in Lakeland that I that I referenced, we met with them last year. You know, it was not uncommon to hear them talk about doing pay adjustments that were ten, fifteen, and twenty percent plus benefit enhancements for their employees. That was now a year and a half ago that most of those occurred, maybe even two years ago. And so we have fallen behind the market. The fourth point that I want to make is related to our nineteen-step system. The nineteen-step pay system that we have, I will tell you, is the biggest and most common complaint that I receive from our general employees. Several years ago, maybe a decade ago, the city of Lakeland's step system was five percent from step to step. That was reduced. It was cut in half to two and a half percent adjustments between steps, which caused some issues. And you're going to hear about some of that from the consultant again in a few moments. Back to our collective bargaining unit employees. Because they have the same complaints as the general employees over the years, they have been able to negotiate and reduce their number of steps while the general employees remain in a nineteen-step system, meaning that if they enter their career here at the city of Lakeland at the entry-level pay, it takes them nineteen years to reach the top of the pay ranges for the markets that their job classifications equate to. The next point I want to make is is really the the biggest point that that I'm I'm trying to make, which is that in order for us to be competitive, one of the things we need to accomplish is that we need to get our general employees to the midpoint, to the fiftieth percentile of their market faster. The reason for that is because when when you think about what that means, when you talk about a market range, you have your 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 minimum, you have your maximum, and you have your midpoint. Well, those employees who are below midpoint, the market tells you that there's opportunities for them to go find similar jobs in the market that are paying at a higher rate because they will pay at midpoint, which is the most optimal level in that market range. However, employees who are are paid above that midpoint, it's less likely that we're going to have issues retaining them because if the market tells you they're at midpoint or above, they're going to have a more difficult time going out to the marketplace to find employment that's going to pay them based on their years of experience, that's going to pay them, you know, at the at the top end of of those ranges. Longer-tenured, more experienced employees, as I mentioned a moment ago, in an effort to try to move our employees to the midpoint faster, for those employees who are at midpoint or above, those longer-tenured, more experienced employees will continue to progress through the pay system with annual across-the-board and merit adjustments. As a matter of fact, one of the things that the consultant will touch on is is the fact that at there will be a calibration that will occur with our new recommended pay system, and it will immediately compensate and make adjustments for years of experience. So it's for these historical realities that I've just described, in addition to other less contributing factors, that we must fix our pay system for our general employees and not just adjust pay ranges, but actually increase pay for job classifications that are lower than what the labor market indicates they should be. Back to the point, we need to put pay in pockets, not just adjust ranges. To accomplish this, so that we can be more market competitive, I'm recommending three components for pay adjustments in the 2024 budget. The first component will be a three percent across-the-board increase for all general employees. The second component will be an increased three percent merit increase for general employees who are below their ranges midpoint, that fiftieth percentile, and a two and a half percent, which is our traditional merit increase for those employees who are at or above the midpoint up to their ranges maximum. And then the third component that I'm recommending is an additional market competitive adjustment for our general employees' job classifications that our pay study has determined are not market competitive, including the reduction of the planned steps that will get employees to their midpoint sooner, as I previously described. So with that, I'd like to introduce our consultant from Bolton Partners, Dan Ripberger, so that he can discuss and present to you the wage study that was performed by Bolton and Park Partners. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Sean. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I think Sean about had it covered, though. So I could maybe sit. You know, this is an interesting discussion to me because we're at a budget meeting and talking about cost. I'm really not going to talk about cost at all. Really, what I'm going to be talking about is is a system to to really help the the city govern better going forward. You know, really, a system that'll help you recruit and and attract the kind of talent you need going forward, to keep folks engaged, keep them present, and then it'll ultimately hold on to those folks. You know, those great performers that you're going to give time off, hopefully, they're not going to go interview somewhere else. You know, you never know some of these things. So in the report, just in the the table of contents to kind of give you an outline of the discussion, methodology will be telling you how we kind of what about the study, what the steps were. We did do a review findings, trying to find out what's broken specifically. It does tend to seem a little bit like an audit, and I think it is by its nature, a little bit overly negative. But, you know, we are trying to point out some things that that we feel need to be repaired. And then lastly, there are several pages that kind of outline our recommendations. And these are all very much programmatic. So these are things that fix the compensation system. And I think Sean hit on a lot of the actions that administration hopes to take as part of this. The only other thing I would mention is this is certainly a point-in-time comparison and a point-in-time review. Just because we finished for this next year with this study, it doesn't mean that the the program should continue to change. You know, market moves on a regular basis, so do structures. Jobs change, technology comes in. So this isn't something that's sort of a once every five years or six years because you certainly want to keep it current so that the city operates the best. So the study covered all the folks not in bargaining units. So it's about four hundred and fifty titles, I think four hundred and thirty-three, about thirteen hundred employees slightly below that. We did not include any elected officials. Our part-time employees are seasonal from this. Certainly, that's a task, but we didn't want to confuse this this broader assessment to try and help fix the program. There are several actions that we take as we go through the study, and I won't go into the the detail of these. I would ask, you know, as I'm going through, if you have any questions, certainly, I would welcome any, you know, discussion as we're talking about it, for sure. I really want to point this out. So we 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 talk a lot about market, and we'll talk a lot about market, you know, as we're we're talking about the study. You know, we we have all told, you know, we had thirty thousand employees in the peer market data that we were able to summarize. We have private industry data. We have other data from public sector organizations. But this is kind of compensation 101 as you're looking at developing a base pay program. The first starts with that organizational job analysis, you know, where you really understand what the jobs are, how they work together, how departments work together. You talk about the philosophy in terms of how work gets done at a spot. Once you have that understanding and understand the work, it's really twofold of what you're looking at. So there is the the market piece that we'll talk about. But equal to that is is some system to say relative to one job to another, what's the value that the the city of Lakeland places on it? Because after thirty-plus years doing this, I can tell you, market is not as precise as a lot of people think it is in terms of how one organization values a job. It could be different than than a lot of others. And it's very important in terms of of helping employees feel that pays fair, that there's that balance between internal and external equity. So when you combine that that evaluation system or that that piece with market, it gives you what we call pay opportunity, which really is just another name for for this job, for what we get, how we value it, here's what we're willing to pay. You know, for someone new in the range, there's an entry rate. You know, you're willing to pay up to a certain amount for the value you're getting, and it's it's a range. It could be a step structure or it could be pay ranges. And then you start to talk about the pay delivery and administration. So how do you increase pay on an annual basis? What's the the best way to go about those sorts of things? It starts to integrate with how you want to manage relationships to, as Sean mentioned, to this this target or this fiftieth percentile. You start to talk about what's required each year as someone's looking for growth or promotion and some of those sorts of items. So when we're talking about this today, I just kind of ask you to keep in mind that particularly when we get to the recommendations, it's systemic. It's all, we're trying to fit something together that that over time will will really help that that recruitment aspect and help folks stay at market. But it's not something that you can just kind of pick certain chunks of and and have it work. So just a little bit of recitation of how we went about it. We spent several days on site and then followed up with a number of interviews. And we talked, certainly with all of the department heads, but oftentimes, we had the luxury of talking to their their management staff and really start to understand the the work, some of the reward challenges and pay challenges they were having. And it really helped us formulate some of the recommendations, but also really understand the differences in work here compared to work elsewhere. So we got to take a tour with with the Parks and Rec crew to really understand some of the the differences with Parks and Rec, similarly with water. You know, we got to see some of those. And those were just areas where we wanted to get a special picture so that we understood some of those differences. As you would expect, we collect a lot of background information. Mark and Cindy have been and Andrea have been great through this process. We keep asking for more data, more policies, more employee information, and we had a tremendous amount of access for that. There are a couple pieces I'll I'll mention when we talk about the benchmarking. But, you know, we we actually grabbed, gathered all of the job descriptions. We had the department heads complete what we call functional surveys. So they gave us some of the feedback prior to interviews. And then each employee was asked to complete what we call a position information form. But essentially, it's a it's a job description for they would write for their own position. It was great because the IT department actually converted it to something that had a lot of workflow built into it, so it was very easily accessible. So all in all, we have a lot of background data that we were able to walk through. When we talk about the market, we take a two-fold approach. So we did a custom survey of peer organizations, and we worked with administration to determine who those right peers are and and who to survey. But we also have a lot of data in-house already, a lot of published surveys. And depending on the market sector, we were trying to. on the market sector, we were trying to portray, we selected different surveys at different times, and I think that'll make a bit more sense. A few example surveys, Public Power Association, Waterworks Association, we actually have data from the Club Managers Association for municipal courses and systems. And then there is a survey that's done broadly in the state of Florida that does have some information from your peers across the state.
And if I may just real quickly, the one he was just referring to is we use that acronym PEPY, and if you'll remember, last year when we were looking at what we were going to provide in pay adjustments, PEPY was one of the sources that we utilized. Thank you, Dan.
So we reached out to 27 peers that you guys identified. Of those 27, we had 18 give us information. When we collect data from peers, we actually just for a download from their payroll system or their human resource information system, so we don't get it identified, and we specifically don't want it identified by person, by name, but we actually get person-by-person information with job title, department, pay rate, pay range, all of those sorts of statistics. And then we generally take on 90% of the matching, so we use a combination of understanding the jobs and department title, but oftentimes we refer back to job descriptions that will be directed to by the participant. They're more than happy to direct us to their job descriptions versus having to do the matching on their own. It is one of those challenges, particularly in the state of Florida, but kind of across the country, there are so many studies going on that your peers, everyone's exhausted from trying to complete surveys, they want to be helpful, but everybody's doing a survey, so it's very difficult to get the data. We were very happy to get the data from these 18, and we actually have information on 30,000 employees, and as we summarized the data, it was from 600 different jobs. One note, I don't know that this matters to the group, but oftentimes some of my, some of the other firms, they will use pay range data, they'll use information so that they can disclose what a PAPCA pays or what Fort Myers pays, you know, for this job with a range. We use actual pay data, and for that reason, we actually adhere to guidelines, I mean, legal guidelines, regulations from the Federal Trade Commission and the Department of Labor. It's been historically, for a long time, when you get outside of the public sector, they view that as price fixing, so if you're actually looking, you know, person by person. So we only summarize the data in the percentiles, and then, you know, we need to have three or more, or five or more, depending on the percentile, to actually provide those summaries, to provide that information. So I just want to show this quickly. So we were able to develop rates on 88, 89, 90% of Lakeland's jobs, which is very, very high. We did it for three markets, and I wanted to show this to you because we will show some overall statistics. The peers being in the middle is the most finite market, it is those 18 organizations. To that, we then add all of the other published data we have, so the PEPY survey, and then the Waterworks, Gas, the Club Managers, we add those data points in there as well to come up with something a bit more broad called public sector. And then we add in data that is general industry. We have a number of surveys that we utilize that reflect, and I think they were mentioned prior, that reflect a person could work anywhere. I will tell you, most of those surveys don't have public sector employers in them unless they're large universities or something like that, so they're much more corporations, for-profits in general. Any questions? Yes, sir?
It's really the page back, though, and I apologize.
Okay. One more back?
Yeah. When we look at the 18 organizations, who supplied the data, why is Tampa and Hillsborough not in that?
Because they didn't participate.
And?
Could not get them to participate.
Period.
Yeah, we can't make, exactly.
And are there any in those 18 that you would think would be less comparable and useful than others?
Well, I would say there are, but there's also some that are bigger, so I think it balanced, you know, from a size perspective, we're really trying to get that plus or minus. And I think they're pretty representative in general.
I've got a question.
Commissioner Simmons.
When you mentioned that you use both non-public sector and for-profit sectors, is that right? So when you compare the compensation for both, I think the general law understanding is that for profit sector, actually, the compensation is more, is that correct?
Not necessarily. It's more for the head of HR, or the head of marketing, or the CFO, but you know, private sector doesn't have, you know, the head of Parks and Rec, so it's kind of a nonstarter, and we'll have those statistics here coming up. And I will say, the private sector we looked at, you know, would be organizations of comparable size, you know, would be 1,500 employees, 2,000 employees. Certainly, you'll see much smaller private sector employers who are starting employees at $12 an hour, or as little as they possibly can, so it is a little different in that So we'll talk a little bit more about the market information, but this is really just looking at the compensation program that exists currently. There are some positives. We found the job descriptions to, actually, it's a relative thing, I don't know if any of you have written a job description before, but it's not very much fun, it's very difficult. You have to be someone fastidious, like a compensation consultant, to do it. Well, but they're here, they're here, and the documentation's consistent, and it exists for all the roles. The exemption status with respect to the Fair Labor Standards Act, all of the jobs had a consistent determination for that. There's a published schedule of active jobs and grades, so there's that position table that's here. And then there are a lot of different pay policies that help govern starting pay, pay adjustments, that are both good and bad. You know, sometimes the existing policies are part of the challenge. The areas that we would recommend to fix internally, by job title hierarchy, it's being consistent with what a coordinator is, with what a specialist is, so that it connotates the right level in the organization consistently. One of the things that can really erode people's sense of fairness in pay is to have a specialist in one department making 20 an hour, and a specialist in another department making 100 an hour. It's a big difference, I understand, but it's that, they're both specialists, and a lot of that can seep into employees' minds. So really, it's just application of a system that a specialist in and of itself sort of means something. We saw some policy documentation going back about an internal job evaluation system existing at one point, but really not at the points now. We still see anything other than kind of market and looking at regrading whatever something would come up. The structure design, we'll talk more about that, as well as the policies and the program So we collected 413 job descriptions, and 595 employee completed questionnaires was where we got a lot of the data. So for the job descriptions, I don't know that there's a lot of change required, but as you start to look at titles and some of those hierarchical changes, you certainly would expect that to flow through. So this is job evaluation. Kind of definitionally, a classification is a job that's been evaluated and assigned to a grade. So the job evaluation system, and there's a lot that are out there historically, I'm sure people have heard of like a point factor system and some of those more detailed approaches, but even outside of a point system, having something that allows you to compare two jobs to some independent standard is one of the keys to helping across departments, you know, ensuring equity, because, and I mean by equity, I mean people's perception of being paid fairly across the organization. So what we didn't really find is there's something current, and there's a policy that was dated, that kind of goes back to 1989, that certainly I think that's something to be addressed, you know, as the organization's moving forward. So, yes, sir?
What does that policy look like, in your mind?
What it should look like, I, well, we'll get to what we recommend in terms of the evaluation system, and I think it's a big part of some of the next steps of implementation potentially as well. Not suggesting a point factor.
We're talking about the classification and say specialist in one form or another. Did I understand correctly that you were saying that if somebody's a specialist in a department, and they see that there's a specialist in another department, that they, if there's a pay disparity between that, that can affect them psychologically, and they could frustrate them? But is that specialist across the board, so we would need to change that verbiage? Because if I'm a mechanical engineer working in, you know, or electrical engineer working in the department, or I'm a specialist that works in finance or Parks and Rec, I mean, that verbiage may be the same, but the job description's completely different?
Oh, no, absolutely, but it has more to do with the level. So if you think of a specialist, you know, oftentimes you'll see, and I'm not going to quote specifically Lakeland right now, just because I don't want to misspeak, but you'll see a specialist in administrative support role, but then you'll also see a specialist in, and I won't say engineering, because engineering is a title like specialist, it's its own, but where it's a degree professional role, you know, someone might, you know, an exempt role, and it's that kind of disconnect that we try and avoid. Another title that's difficult is a coordinator. You know, you'll see coordinators who are heading major sections of departments, but then you'll also see them serving an office in a reception kind of.
That's probably a better example. I think my engineer was probably a bit high, but that's just kind of what came to my head, so thank you for that, that makes sense.
No, absolutely, it's like accountant, you know, we try and reserve accountant to mean something specific. There's lots of reasons, I know they're all in the margins, but that's really what we're here to hopefully advise on, hopefully, you know, have that system that gets the, you get the most out of it that you can.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I think Sean hit on this already, the current structure, I'm not sure historically kind of where it came from, but there's a 2.5% difference from one grade to another, and then there's a 2.5% difference, this is the step structure, a 2.5% difference from one step to another. And basically, the problem with it is, one, is too wide, and significantly too wide, from minimum to maximum, and then the difference between each grade, that 2.5%, it's not really supportable in terms of any sort of job evaluation system, it's certainly not supportable based on market information, you know, you just, you can't put that fine pine on differences between two jobs. So what we tend to see, and we did some calculations, where you'll see the majority of employees in one grade making more than the majority of the employees in the grade above them. So it's not really even serving as a clear tool in that sense. The challenge then also, if you have two wider ranges, is as you would expect, you know, your minimums are very low, so it's hard to recruit, you know, it's hard to find folks at that minimum starting rate. So, I'm sorry?
You skip steps.
If you can, potentially, but again, you know, there's defined policy, so, and it's trying to adhere to policy and have it fit. And then the other, you also get high, you know, you also start to pay much more above that market target that you've set, and there are all sorts of ways to recognize long tenure. It doesn't have to be just in pay, for sure. So there's a couple things, and I don't want to beat this one to death too much, because this is always the challenge, working with agencies, is helping to work through the budgeting process, kind of what was talked about before with the positions. So at the bottom, we have the piece talking about various naming pieces, so what tends to happen is rather than having kind of a progression base where you get into budgeting that you might be able to have someone get promoted from one level to another, it fits into the budgeting process. There are a lot of requests for reclassification, and some of those things come up, and if you had a lot of change organization, you know, if you had new technology come in and it meant you needed to recalibrate jobs and a lot of that, certainly you could see some of that reclassification or the reevaluation, but most of these progressions are known, you know, most of these jobs are known, so rather than having so many classifications, it seems like some of that would be better served in the budgeting process. You know, and I'm sure some of it is, but I just know that among department heads, I think that creates a bit of more confusion, knowing how to get an employee to one spot from another, to be able to help them grow, help manage their, you know, contribution to the organization as they're going forward. Does that make sense? Okay, good. The last piece on this slide, and you may be aware, there are a lot of what are called work groups, but basically, these are groups of employees who are treated slightly differently or differently based on what's considered overtime, based on how flex time's handled. So rather than sort of following the statutory guidelines across, I mean, you're going to make allowances for fire, you know, for public safety roles and some of those, having sort of one consistent approach that fits Florida state law, fits the Fair Labor Standards Act, there's a lot of discretion that's out there in these various work groups. And for me, it's more of a risk, because as you start to change that, it's very confusing in terms of recording hours worked and those sorts of things for non-exempt folks. And then, we didn't hear a lot of it, but it seems like the thing that would bring out some discontent from one department who's treated differently than another, you know, among employee groups. So here's the key findings with the market, and we've certainly been working with administration based on our recommendations and as they're trying to establish how they want to, what specific recommendations they want to present forward. But as we look at actual pay, this is how much the employees who are part of the study make compared to the various markets, you can see that compared to your peers, that overall, your employees are at 93.3% of the 50th percentile. And just, I know you probably saw it on the slide before, but you know, of that, however many people got reported to a particular job, this 50th percentile would be that exact middle rate, you know, between all of those folks. Compared to the public sector, which includes some of the additional data, it's 92%, and then compared to the general sector or the private industry, it's 93.3%. So as we looked at the data, it's actually closer, in this instance, for the public sector, or excuse me, the general sector, than it is, say, that public sector more broadly. So we presented this, and folks want to know, but these statistics to us really don't matter exactly, because there's so much variation, you know, you think you have a pay range, whether it's steps or whether it's something more open. There is an allowance for different years of experience at a job where someone would be paid, you know, there's a reason some people might be at step two versus step 10. So it's not so much the actual pay as it is as we're looking at the structure, and I'll go over this quickly because we are recommending new structures, but basically, compared to the public sector at the 50th percentile, you're about 5% below market. That 5% is going to get obfuscated a little bit, just because we're not just increasing the structure, but if we're going to recommend keeping all of your structures and all of that, we would recommend it basically increasing it by 5.7% or the difference, yeah, exactly. This is a quick view, we also looked at medical benefits, and I know a lot has been discussed with the medical. The biggest challenge is, out of all of the peers, you are the only ones currently who only have single and family. Everyone else has at least one additional, most have two additional coverage levels, so I think those changes certainly are much more compliance with what's out there. For dental and vision, your benefits are fine, but we viewed it as less than competitive because it's non-contributory, employees pay 100%. because it's non-contributory, employees pay the 100% of the benefit. For disability, since there's no short-term coverage on the short term, for short term, we view that as, as trailing the market as well. And then similarly, you have the $50,000 in life coverage, which certainly you'll see from time to time in smaller private industry companies because once you get above that 50,000, you start to get into imputed income and you have to handle the administrative calculations, you know, to withhold tax from employee paychecks. But usually, it's, it's closer to one-time salary. And we certainly saw, you know, getting up to, to one and a half, two-time salary, you know, up to a maximum amount. I think everything else on the broad-based benefits, this is, we're not talking about retirement here, certainly would be in line with the market. So retirement benefits, basically you're, you're, you're in line, in our opinion. So if you look at this, this first table, this is really looking at how much it costs the city of Lakeland compared to those folks who are in FRS and what their contributions are. There's only three of the organizations who are in the peer group who don't have a pension, who are using a defined contribution plan. And, and all of them are much lower, you know, from a cost perspective, like what the organization's contributing. The, the difference between your plan and FRS, one of the differences, is employees don't pay into social security if they're part of your plan, whereas in FRS, employees do still pay into social security. So when you're looking at the employee contribution for Lakeland of 8.1% compared to the employee contribution for FRS, that, that 9% for FRS, 6% of that is actually social security and the employee portion of it. So, so what, what you see is it's almost a net non-difference for employees. You know, it's about exactly the same. The, the one piece about FRS is the, the benefit formula is a little bit richer for management, but it's, it's a lot more expensive from a cost perspective. So, you know, you can see that the employer contribution is, is a little bit higher for you compared to what, what would be in FRS. But I think it's more than made up for in terms of what would, you know, it would cost to provide that same level of benefit to the management team.
Pretty neutral.
It, it's, it feels that way. I mean, as I look at retirement, for me, it's really just a, a reward philosophy question. You know, it's, it's, FRS is more portable to, to other Florida employers, which is a good thing and a bad thing. You know, from a retention perspective, if you have someone for 10 years, my guess is they're going to be less likely to leave for FRS pension benefits because they won't be able to just carry forward, you know, the tenure and everything they've earned here. From a recruitment perspective, it may make it a little more difficult because it's not portable. But I think that's experience-based and something administration will probably take a look at going forward. So I can do this slide and we can quit? Or I can do this slide quickly and, and we can talk about some of the more abroad. But basically, it's maintaining the job description process, fixing the titles, looking at a more robust job evaluation system, as I had mentioned, revising the pay structure to align with market, including getting to the $15 an hour minimum. And then based on the, the pay structure, going back through and revising policies to, to make sure they comply, you know, with how increases would be provided and a lot of those other items. These are just a few of the titles that we pointed out. This is a, a higher level of our career stream system. And it's, it's one that we utilize to help evaluate all the jobs. So we used our, our version of this system. Basically, we assigned all of the covered Lakeland jobs and classified them using this, this approach. We, we use career groups. So we have groups for, say, management, exempt professionals, support, technicians, labor. And then within that, there are a number of, of what are called career levels that, that describe entry level up to, say, skilled trades, defining different levels of planner, different levels of engineer, those sorts of things. And from, from here, if this was a desired approach, it would really be customizing it and making sure that it fits, fits the city and, and how those progressions want to be managed. This is a, this is one I think is an important decision, both for the commission and for administration because this is what really the structure will be built on. You know, each structure is based on a specific target or a specific amount in the market. So what we're suggesting here is, is really focusing on that public sector market rather than the general industry because I think it, it provides a little bit broader picture than just the peer group. But it doesn't have the same problems with kind of that market equity between jobs. You know, say IT, I'll go back to parks and rec, or, you know, even as you get into public safety kinds of roles. So within that, we do have clients that, that want to target above the 50th percentile. So essentially, if you have a range and there's a midpoint, you would, you would pick some level above that 50th percentile because you want to be more of a leader in terms of being able to recruit talent. What we typically start with is looking at the 50th percentile. And then as you have people who have been with you for a lot of years, contributing at a high level, you start to allow them to get above that target in the range. That, that's that sort of, you know, explanation as you move forward. So two slides after this, we will have the, the structures that are there. But we're recommending kind of expanding. We didn't talk a lot, a lot about, there's some senior management pay bands currently. But essentially, we want to clean those up, but expand those ranges downward. And ultimately, it would cover exempt jobs. So there's a number of categories that those folks would fall in. So it would be management and specialist. And that would include fire management roles, police management roles, kind of the non, so the non-bargaining unit folks. There would be many fewer grades with a larger difference between the grades. It actually varies, you know, as you'll see, from 10 to 15%. It allows us to, to much more closely align with the marketplace. You know, as I mentioned before, we couldn't find a difference in two and a half percent from one grade to another. You just start to make things up at that point. Would also, and this will make more sense when we talk about pay increases, but you know, you'll have a, a range with a width of, say, 50 or 40%. But we're also suggesting that you add some definitions within those ranges so that as you're looking to hire folks or make determinations where someone should be paid, it provides some guidance based on usually years of experience in that specific job. So it allows you to, to say from a policy perspective, someone could be at this spot if they have this many years. And then up to a spot, you know, there's going to be some additional approval required. And then there'll still be a maximum where you would be able to hire somebody, for sure. One of the keys, and, and this is sometimes optional, some of it depends on how our clients like to manage it. But with, with an open range, the range should move each year. There are statistics out there that talk about, you know, what typical range movement is compared to actual pay increases. But what happens is the range moves, it doesn't necessarily mean people automatically get a pay increase. And that's one of the key differences between generally open ranges and when you talk about the step structures that we're suggesting for the non-exempt staff. When that structure moves, employees would at least move based on the structure. So they would at least stay on the step that they're on. Typically, you would also then expect them to see if they're eligible to receive a step increase and, or to have that be considered. Again, it has fewer grades versus the two and a half percent. We dropped it down to five. And we did reduce the number of steps to 15, which has the effect of, of effectively increasing your entry level rates to, to competitive levels. But it does limit some of that long-term liability for, for someone, you know, in that same role.
Typical are 15 steps in the municipality.
It, it varies. I'll say, we, we try to keep it down between 10 to 15, you know, from a step perspective. But it does depend on how the municipality changes progression for jobs. So if there are a lot more levels of jobs, it does allow you to have fewer steps because people are progressing differently rather than just sitting in the same job for a long time. I think the, the key, and Sean hit on this. So these are the open ranges, and I'll get back to that piece. So what we've done, and this is a very traditional approach, taking a, a pay range and breaking it into quartiles, kind of four equal groups. And what the quartiles do are give you base points to say, someone who has these years of experience, we typically want to bring them in at this rate, you know, to give some of that guidance. This is the step structure. So we go to T21 to T43. And again, going back to that structure comparison, so you can't see that these are 5.7 higher than the previous ranges, but they are built on the current 50th percentile. So essentially, they are, we're just fixing them and, and it's going to move some folks, you know, and some of that around. Two things here, and this is just one of those, kind of going back to the classification approach. It's trying to be as clear as you can around what the, the classification is and how jobs should get to grades to kind of simplify it. It pushes back to department heads a little bit to be a bit more proactive, both in terms of the jobs that are there, but also the people they have. So that there's not a lot of last-minute change or this needs to happen because. So trying to remove some of the mid-year and make it more of a, a consistent process. The other thing that we're recommending is somehow making a, a revision to the current PMR process. And I think it's going to require some work because I think a lot of the position control and budgeting piece of it, it's important that that stays because that's a, a key aspect of it. But I think there needs to be a balance between what's a, a promotion that's something that could have been budgeted for, that sort of thing. So I think part of what's happening now is there are too many mid-year requests that come through the PMR, at least from the ones that we've been able to review the past year and a half. I just think a lot of those could kind of fit into a more, more process with forethought. That said, you know, if you have someone leave and you need to do something differently, if it's, if there's a budget impact, then it would necessarily, I think, go to PMR. Annual adjustments. So basically, and, and there'll be more discussion on the implementation of this. I think, you know, Sean hit on some of the key pieces there. But certainly, we're recommending that there's an ongoing increase process and that the size of the annual budget should be anticipated market movement. There's certainly plenty of data out there. If you adopt this, you know, at this point in time, you'll be competitive at the 50th percentile. So really, it's just keeping that, that updated. For the open range structure, it would be using the quartiles to help manage the adjustments. So I think there's some modeling that, that administration's going to need to do. But, you know, we, we certainly can make some, some thoughts in terms of. Part of the goal is to try and get people who are, are contributing well to the 50th percentile closer, someone you hire new. You know, it's fine if someone's at the minimum or at the lower end of the range, if they're brand new in the job. But if they come in and they're knocking it out of the park, you want to somehow kind of get that person moving. So part of this will be to do that. And then, once you have someone who's above that, that market target or the, the 50th percentile, that's where you might say, we do want to continue to provide increases, but we're going to slow those down a little bit because they are above that 50th percentile. So it's, you know, trying to, to hit budget, but really trying to help the, the city stay competitive or, or more close to that market target. It's a similar piece with the step structure. Certainly, you couldn't tell based on that graphic, I suppose, if you went back and did the calculations. But the percentage differences between steps from seven up to the market, up to step seven are 3%. And then once you're above step seven, the increases would go to 2.5%. So it's going to move people along at the first part of the structure a little bit more quickly.
And if I can, just let me make a comment. And again, I know we've got employees who are hearing this for the first time because we needed to present to the commission first. But you know, when you think about what our, really our historical steps have been, what, what we oftentimes refer to as merit, it, it has been historically 2.5%. So, you know, going, going to the 3% for, for those that are, you know, needing to get to midpoint, while those that are beyond midpoint are only at 2.5, but it's really not taking anything, it's not lowering what our historical 2.5% merit movements have been.
Any questions on this? You guys have been very, very quiet.
Absorbing.
Awesome.
Well, I have a question.
Go ahead. Come in for me.
In, in reference to your steps, how do you, how do you recommend these steps be implemented? They're given at one year, two years, or by, you know, just because you've been there 15 years doesn't mean you should be at the top of the scale per se if you're not a good worker or somebody else.
Well, I don't know that there's that specific of a comparison of one person to another. But, you know, there's always sort of minimum performance standards to, to move forward. You know, so, so steps are going to be somewhat automatic unless there's a performance plan or something like that.
I think that's your question really is, is do, do you get this automatically? Or is there a way to hold them if they're not performing?
You know, that's, that's, would be further discussion with administration. We haven't suggested that at this point.
Presently, and, and the, the way that's presently handled is that it's during their, the performance review. If there, if it's, if there's not a successful performance review, that can then freeze them where they are rather than, again, receive what we presently called their, their merit increase, which is the 2.5%.
Question I would have is you had mentioned that we'd use the 3% to get them to midpoint. Why wouldn't we work faster than that to get them to midpoint if they're off today?
I can answer that honestly. Particularly on the step structure, I, you couldn't afford to do that really because you're, you're bringing in so many new people on a regular basis, starting them at that low level. The structure's moving 2.5% each year, it's four, so those folks would be 6%. And I don't know that that's financially viable.
So I'm, I misrepresented my question.
I'm sorry.
And, and you're right in answering it that way. What I'm suggesting is today, where we have employees that aren't at the 50th percentile, that because we've missed it when we let it slide, is there a more accelerated way to move some of those people?
Yeah, that, that, that is, we're going to talk about the implementation. And, and so when I mentioned the third category.
Sir.
The third category is where we're going to try to make some advancements in that. And, and either Dan or I will, will get to that probably toward the conclusion.
We'll provide some guidance. The, the administration's been working on that very hard, I know, trying to come up with the, the perfect answer, which is tough. So this kind of goes back to starting rates. There are some, some things here that I think are a little bit different. And, you know, keep, keep in mind that, that once everything's approved, there's certainly a lot of work to follow up, both from a policy development perspective and then working with the different constituencies to, you know, make sure that there's an understanding and, and that folks buy into the new program as much as possible. So as an example, so you have someone in the first quartile you're trying to hire. You would, basically, if they have zero to five years of job experience, it would be a guideline that you would say, so here's, and, and these really aren't, aren't completely formulated. So, you know, you'd really want to have something a bit, bit clearer so that it's also clear, the level of approval authority to do different things, you know, as you're going forward. For promotional increases, it is 50% of the difference between the current and new grade. So basically, think of someone in an open range. If there's a 20% difference between the two jobs, their promotional increase would be 10%. If there's a 20% difference between the two jobs, their promotional increase would be 10%. Or potentially to the minimum of a new range. And it brings them back a little bit in terms of the structure itself. But also keeping in mind, they're sort of brand new in this new job. So to me, that's sort of a completely appropriate process. Having it relative like this as well, take someone who might be mid-level, if they're promoted to a department head, it gives a tool to provide something that's a larger increase to recognize that job value. So just a couple of quick bullets. While Bolton is a benefits consulting firm and retirement consulting firm as well, we're really didn't get into too many of the details of what we suggest. But at a high level, I think that the medical plan coverage levels have been addressed. Certainly, we would suggest investigating maybe further the dental envision. There are a lot of reasons not to make a change ultimately. Some of it's looking at what the actual out-of-pocket cost is for employees and some of that more detail. One thing that we might suggest certainly is looking at some type of short-term disability insurance. We find that as it integrates with workers' compensation and disability management, it can actually be of a positive in terms of helping people get back to work more quickly and some of that stuff. And last is just the life insurance component. Sir?
All of that is measurable. And so when you look at that, the last three recommends, when you look at that, certainly, we can quantify that.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and talk about what the impact is annually with respect to that. So it would seem like each one of those components, it would be nice to know those numbers at some point. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. On the previous page, it talked about transferable lateral movements. How often do you see in organizations you've examined that you get a one-time lump sum, like a $5,000 one-time move-up fee versus something like that? Do you see that very often?
Well, it's usually location-based more so. So it certainly doesn't apply to our agency clients as much. You know, if you're sending someone to... I could try and make a... Versus being in Lakeland, Florida, you know, if you're going to send someone to, you know, the middle of Iowa, something like that, that's where you might see that sort of bonus come into play more often. It's usually trying to get someone to do a job they don't really want to do. I mean, specific, but you need them to do, you know what I mean? It is absolutely that.
Questions or comments? It's been a really wonderful summary and fruition of a lot of good work. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so translating that. Are you going to make some summary comments relative to that? Or do you want to delay that and just assume that we have put them into the budget?
I think I'll go ahead and give you kind of what the, at least the, in this budget's net, net effect of that averaged would be. And so in working with Bolton and an awful lot of work that's gone into deciding what the next best steps would be. If we were to implement the changes that have been discussed, the average overall cost increase would be less than, or let me say, a maximum of 5%. Now, the thing that I want to be very clear about, so that later on, there would be no surprises for anyone, is that when you look at how those individual adjustments would occur to meet the things that have been discussed, it ranges anywhere from where some employees, based upon experience and based upon where they are in the market ranges, would not receive that third category adjustment because they're in line. But it also ranges all the way up to where there's not many, but there are some, a small percentage. They could be as much as in the 20%, 20s range. But again, if you, if we did that, even for those outliers, I will say, that are in the, are up into the 20s percent range, still, your cost for that average is no more than 5%. Now, we are still working through some of those outliers, and that's why I'm saying a maximum of 5%. Actually, in some of our last work, it's a little less than that. And as we continue to refine, you know, I think it'll be a little less than 5%. But I would tell you that at this point in time, 5% increase for that component programmed into the budget is what the cost would be based on the average.
Commissioner Reed.
Does this take into consideration the 15 steps versus the 19 steps?
Yes.
I think there's some really wonderful enhancements in this recommendation. And the last thing we want to do is have our generals not be at the same levels of our, of the people that are represented by our unions. And I, that'd be maybe not the last thing we don't want to do, but it's certainly a high priority not to do. And so it is, it's good to see that if we have some real outliers and correction places that need to take place that are in excess of that, that we get those things done. Because we want to hire, we want our city to continue to do the outstanding work that is done with employees compensated fairly and as we anticipate. And I thought, I liked your visual aid in that slide. Our goal and expectation, probably as a commission, I certainly think from my perspective, is that we're hitting those 50th tiles and in the ranges that they're in. And so doing, being as drastic as necessary to get ourselves corrected there in the short term so that we are appropriate, makes it implementable for everything else that's being recommended here going forward. Mr. Brosart.
So I'd just like to add something to what the city manager said. Part of that cost, too, is that is not only fixing the 37 different ways that we reach FLSA, that gets cleaned up in a great way, for the non-collective bargaining folks. We get a chance to fix a good bit of that. The other thing, too, is, is we're getting up to the $15 an hour minimum for new hires. Most of those were part-time, we had a couple full-timers. But that is also being fixed as a part of this. That we were required to get to 12 this year, and it's been Sean's goal for all of us to get to the 15 quicker. And so we've got some of our peers that are already at 15, this year we'll be getting to 15. So that is part of that, this solution as well. So, thank you.
And so, Mr., let me just clarify again, what the recommendation would be, would be that, as I've mentioned before Dan presented, it, we would, and have programmed in as a proposal, a 3% across the board for the general employees. The 3 or the 2.5%, depending on where they are, up to mid or above, in their, in what we call their merit adjustment, up to the maximum of their range. And then this additional piece, which is the market adjustment piece, of what would be, you know, up to an average of 5% total increased cost to the city.
And, but that market adjustment's important. I mean, that's, that is so we can help to minimize the slides and make certain that employees understand, we want them to be compensated fairly, you know?
And that market adjustment is back to, we need to get to midpoint sooner.
Yes, sir.
We need to get people to midpoint, and then moving forward, those who aren't, they need to have a faster progression to get to that. Because as I explained, that's really the optimal place to be within the range. We should not have, based on pay, the recruiting, or I'm sorry, the retention challenges that we've been experiencing if we get to that 50th percentile.
Commissioner Music.
And when we're talking about a 5% average, that'll be for general employees. This would not include anybody that's under a collective bargaining group, is correct?
That is correct.
So if we take that, if we take that 5%, what does that, what does that look like from a dollar standpoint? I mean, if you take that, so what is...
Citywide?
Citywide, if that, what is that, 5%?
Probably in the neighborhood of $4 million. Probably less than that by a little bit, but that's round numbers, $4 million.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioner Music mentioned something. So now is a good time for me to just also make sure so that there is no confusion. You know, in addition to the general employees, we do already have in the, for fiscal year '24, based upon our existing collective bargaining contracts, we already have, and again, programmed into the budget, is for our fire collective bargaining unit and our police collective bargaining unit, a 1.5% across the board and a 2.5%, again, what we presently call merit. So that's also part of the cost for, you know, the pay that's in the budget.
But that's currently budgeted, so what we're talking about here would be anything that would be outside of that anyway.
That is correct. And what we'll show you at, whenever it's now or after lunch, or whenever we show you the day's cash, will show you the effect of what we're recommending, yes.
Good. Well, it's one of the most important places we can spend money. Because we have to have employees that enjoy what they do and contribute in positive ways and are paid appropriately. And so it matters.
We'd like to clarify something for Commissioner Music and for the rest of you. That 4 million is a round number right now. Because we don't have all of the details ironed out yet, I think that's probably a high-end number. But Human Resources is still working with Bolton, so we don't have all of the details fleshed out yet as far as comparables as to Sean's point. If something is showing as above a certain percent recommended for change, well, we want to make sure. Are the comps right? Are the job descriptions right? Date ranges, all of those factors, we just want to double-check those to be as accurate as possible. And so that's why we don't have anywhere near a final detailed list, Jim.
And so those are kind of the refinements that I mentioned. But we're comfortable at the, that the 5% would be the maximum, could potentially be, could potentially be less. The other thing that, you know, kind of gets into that is, back to my explanation a moment ago, where, you know, there are some individuals, based upon their years of experience and what their market is moving to, where I suggested, you know, some will need no additional, you know, third component, but some could be up to, into the 20-ish percentile range, well, or increase. You know, we're looking at, and again, based on cost and based upon kind of some of the discussions today and what the commission wants to do with the overall budget, you know, if necessary, we could cap that in this particular year. You know, we could say, hey, for those who are scheduled to go above, you know, 10%, we're going to cap it at 10. Now, that means in future years, we need to gain that ground. But those are some of the kind of options that are still out there, which is why that number can still fluctuate. But again, that 5% is the maximum that it will be.
And so it's an as much as. One of the things I think that's negative about capping, frankly, is if we're out around, we're out around. And if you do a study, make it work the way that it shows that we should. And we ought to do that and fix it and not leave it. Because what we're missing in those few outliers is representative of what is competitive in the marketplace and that we ought to take care of. So I would personally not be in favor of stepping people into this. I'd be in favor of correcting it. I saw Commissioner Music.
Yeah, and yeah, and thank you for that comment because it, I don't know personally that I would agree with that. Where I sit, just because if, it would depend on the range, like, how far are we out? Because if we, as a city, can look and say, and the general employees can look and say, okay, I can see that they are making progress and they're moving towards that. I don't know that I could be in favor of making a huge jump all at once. But it was a comment that Mr. Brosart had made early on when we were talking about trash. And that's the one thing that we have well, that we want to honor them with the right pay. And that is, we've got consistency and we've got dependability. You know, I mean, every single time, at the right time, I get my garbage picked up, my water, when I flush my commode, it works. And, you know, so there's a value that can't be understated there at all. But it's just hashing through all this to see, you know, what it's going to take us to get where we need to. And then what are we, what are we willing to do to get it? Because we've got to clump with the money.
Any other comments? Right, how would you like to move? It's 11:35. You want to move into the, starting the operating budget? And since we don't have food, it's a good idea.
Lunch is not arrived yet, so we can move forward or take a break until lunch arrives.
No, no, let's move forward, and we'll find a natural place to break in this.
Okay, so this next couple of slides are the revenue portion of the budget in the general fund. As you can see, we received good news from the property appraiser's office that she anticipates a 12.15% growth for '24. And later on, I'll break that down a little bit for you. We recognized an actual of 15.25% growth in '23. I think in '22, we were at 11.25%. And '21, we were around 8%, 8.24, I think. And the year before that was probably 65 or something, if I remember correctly. So what we're doing for this year is we are projecting, oops, sorry. We're projecting 5% growth in the next two years. Again, a better outlook than when we were talking last year. I don't know that I can find a good reason, and a lot of that's talking to, you know, folks that like Chuck and Brian and all that are looking at what's going on in Lakeland and what's planned for this area for new residential, new commercial, those types, new industrial, whatever it is. And so they, too, are very comfortable with this best estimate of five for right now for the next two years, okay?
Comfortably conservative, sir.
Comfortably conservative, absolutely. So with those assumptions, this day's cash file is what those look like, okay? We'll start with the starting surplus in '23, how we ended '22. When we had last talked with you in September, we had estimated that we were going to finish the year with $42,580,000 in surplus. So we missed it by a less than a tenth, yeah, less than 1%. So we were close, and most of that was simply because we had extra monies come in from the state that we didn't anticipate at the end of the year. So sliding down to the, in the '23 column, you see a large number, $4.662 million of forecasted revenue savings, that's this fiscal year in '23. What we are seeing is that half-cent sales tax revenues are up above what the state had originally told all the munis to forecast. Here's what you should expect in Lakeland, and so forth. Half-cent sales tax revenues are up. We are collecting more property tax revenues than we are allowed to budget, and they're all that way. If you look at each of the other columns, '24, '25, '26 in there, most of that is what we're not allowed to budget because you're not allowed to budget up to 95% of your property tax revenues. Okay? So the other piece, we've got, we've collected some extra, about $300,000 extra dollars in some revenues from, revenues that we collect from the red light cameras, those are all falling back into the general fund. So those types of things are what makes up the $4.6 million. The forecasted expense savings of $12 million, most every bit of that is vacancies, okay? A big portion of that is what you authorized this last year with 13 new hires in fire, in police, and then 24 new hires in fire. 12 for the new station, 12 for the Kelly days, okay? We just haven't filled all of them yet, thus... We just haven't filled all of them yet, thus recognizing tremendous savings that fall to the bottom line.
Primarily personnel, though.
Personnel, absolutely. Vacancies associated with that. So most of it are ones that we identified and budgeted for this last year. So it just falls to the bottom line, which is why the day's cash for '23 is so much higher than normal at 127. What is included in here is the 1.5 and 2.5 across the board and merits for our coworkers in police and fire, the collective bargaining. Okay? What is also included in here is an up to 5% cost on average for the general fund for the wage study. So the wage study estimate is built into this, as well as the across-the-boards that Sean talked about, and the estimated merit changes. Yes. Now, remember, this is, you know, we are, but in July, so we're going to see ups and downs in revenues between now and the end of the year. But this is a very, very comfortable, we're very comfortable with this projection. So with that, I think, Sean, you wanted to talk about the items below the line, right? But I'd just say the ones below the line are also included in those numbers. So what you're seeing for day's cash through '26 there include those for line items down below that Sean's going to talk about.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Mike, this 5% budget increase, does that include all the people that are going to be going up on the 15 step? How do we figure out how many people are going to be going up in steps that are, for next year? I mean, I know there's a lot of people going to get an increase, but there's more people going to be moving up as well.
We've got that. It's all baked in.
That's all in there, one time?
Yes, sir. It's all baked in.
That's back to that, that 5% maximum, based upon the average of all of that, lows to highs, that's in there.
Are we going to stop, or where's the steps going to come out, in the middle? That's like taking out 5 and 6, or is it going to be 7 and 8, or 1 and 2? Where are the steps, where are these four steps going to come from? Do we have any idea?
They, they really, low and high, they just, they just kind of reduce down.
They condense the range.
They reduce down incrementally, yeah.
Reduce it and then divide it.
Condense the range.
Reduce and divide.
Right. Condense it and then move it up. Right.
So all the more reason to consider, since this is all in here, doing this in one corrective increment, you know, because we still have pretty good days' cash.
Then, Mr. Mayor, if I can, just, I will comment on, and Mike mentioned it a moment ago, the items that are there at the bottom listed are there because we have, the commission has had previous discussions on these and have expressed a desire to accomplish these. And so you will all, you know, recall last year, some conversations about for this year, doing something to assist with the Polk Museum of Art. Now, that has changed recently. I'm not sure if the commission all received that, but, you know, last year, when we first received that initial request, it was, it was for the $500,000 that would be spread out over a five-year period. They've amended that request now and have asked that the commission would consider that $500,000 over two years, so $250,000 per year. There's no surprise of all of the discussions on the affordable housing type initiative, and so there's an ability to fund another $1 million, you know, for those purposes. And then going back to, you know, even some of our strategic planning retreat discussion, you know, the city has some needs to acquire some properties, and so there's an ability to provide more funding for that purpose. And then, you know, also, you'll recall in some discussions on transportation about how, how we could do more in terms of maintenance with more revenue and funding put toward that. I only paused because I started to say how ill-funded, but I didn't want to say ill-funded. With more, with more funding toward maintenance, you know, as you're, I mean, impact fees and the like go toward, you know, creating new capacity, but we are slipping behind and could use, you know, some funding that would go toward the maintenance.
Of existing roads, when we're talking about transportation.
Correct. And so, and so, you know, those are the things, again, that we have previously discussed, and that's why we went ahead and programmed them in. But again, that is certainly here in a moment. When we get to the commission discussion, you all can decide whether you want to do that or not. But we have programmed it in just based upon those past discussions with the commission.
Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, on the road maintenance fund, is that $1 million programmed in for future fiscal years? It says recurring, so I assume it is.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the formula picks it up in each of the other two years. It doesn't for the other ones, that's why I put one year, one year, two years. But for that one, it is $1 million every year going to the transportation fund. Remember, too, if at some point the federal government or some, the state or whatever, changes the funding for everybody in our state, because everybody's facing this, you could then stop this, right? This doesn't have to be permanent. This is solving a need that Heath and Greg James and Ryan talked to you at great length in the strategic retreat about. And one of the slides that I had worked through was, it's an average of about $1 million a year that we need, and so we would simply transfer it over, set it aside for maintenance, not for new construction. This was just maintenance.
And one of the things we'd probably see from the state, if we did, if they did a change in formula anyway, would be for what we needed for construction. So even still, the probability of us turning this off is probably small. That's because we have to keep roads up. And boy, when you go to a city that doesn't do this well, it is so demonstrative so quickly, and it makes an impression about the whole entire city when you look at what roads are like, and just the safety factors and quality of life.
And it's back to dealing with growth. I mean, the more growth we've had, the more use there is, the more maintenance needs that there are. And so thank you, Commissioner McLeod, for that question, because I, even though we have it listed as recurring, I should have mentioned that, because it is $1 million recurring. And so, thank you. That was a good question, a miss on my part.
Okay, comments on this? Commissioner Music.
What does $1 million get us? Right, what can we do with the $1 million bucks for maintenance?
I'll tell you what. I can pull up the spreadsheet that we used. Hey, Nate, can you switch me over? So that I can, I can show my screen?
Answer is yes.
And voila, it appears.
The fact that it's reoccurring is good.
Nate, you deserve on the wizard of odds behind the giant screen.
Thank you, Nate. So, as you can see in the far-left column, and Heath, feel free to jump up if I misspeak. My understanding is, this is the current gas tax revenues, we're now in '24. The maintenance costs are 80% of what we receive. That can change in the future, but right now, that's what it is. Our current maintenance that we can kick in is 5.3. So in the first year, we're $188,000 short. If you'll scroll or look down at the very bottom, at the 960, that's the $1 million average that we have. The suggestion is, we set it in because we know our costs are going up. And as recently as yesterday, in a conversation with Heath Frederick, he found out that, was it milling and resurfacing costs?
And also our preservation costs.
Preservation costs have gone up 40%.
About the chemicals.
Just yesterday, right? So likely, the $1 million is going to be tapped sooner than every couple year, you know, 200 or 300,000 a year. But the idea being, it's going to grow. I'd rather not have it, every year, we've got to have the general fund kick in that much more. Let's set it aside while we can for maintenance, not for, not for new construction.
Heath, any roundout comments to that at all?
I would just say, understanding that our roads are aging, and so the types of treatments we do, they have extended the life of those roads, but that means we have to do, I'd say, milling, resurfacing, which is much more than preservation. So we're getting to that point in the city, so this $1 million will help us make a beneficial impact and to keep our roads at the standard they're at.
And haven't you had a slide in the standards?
We have.
Yeah, so that's another point.
But we're continuing to take in new subdivisions, new roads, that increases the maintenance costs as well, so.
Commissioner Music.
How much life do we get out of, like, the micro milling that we do? It looks really good for a little while, but what's?
Typically, three to seven years.
Okay.
Yep. And then, you know, you'll notice that we've done that around the city. If you'll see the reveals in our stormwater inlets, that's where we've done that so many times now, we're getting to the point where we need to mill and resurface those roads. And that's much more expensive than doing pavement preservation.
Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Hey, Nate, can you switch me back to the PowerPoint, please? Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Again, this is, this is a presumption of, oh, yes, ma'am.
It's a reminder of cash on hand, what we like it for our rating, just for the public.
Yes, so we want the, our goal is to be by year three, anytime we're looking at it, 45 to 60 days cash on hand. And the other thing that we always want you to focus on is the drop between years, right? So if we saw a 20 or 25-day drop between '24 and '20, I mean, '25 and '26, well, then '27 could look worse. We're in a very, we're so blessed. We've had so many excess monies come in from new construction and some valuation that, and that's part of what Sean was looking at, is growing from, you know, 105, 106,000 folks, and then we're up through 22. I think we're at 122,000 folks. So that is, that's where we are with the current millage.
Other questions or comments? Is lunch here?
It is. It's being set up as we speak, and we'll just be staying in here. And so this would probably be a good time to break before, it's up to the commission, but we're really at a point to where you all are about to begin your discussions.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do that. And get set up, and, you know, take a little break, and then by the time we're done with that break, the food line will be ready to go. Thank you.